Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. Welcome to a larger-than-normal in council chambers audience and everyone that's watching. Go ahead and have roll call, please.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Yes, I think we could hear you, but it was a little soft.
It's quiet. It's on, but it's quiet.
Just quickly, before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, we want to recognize a past and a future birthday. Councilmember Moller just had a birthday yesterday.
Oh.
Congratulations. And in honor of Councilmember Durham's upcoming birthday, would you please join us or lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is the adoption of tonight's agenda. There may need to be a change if our one speaker on the caffer is delayed in traffic, but we will take that if and when it happens.
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no other changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
In a second. Okay. Please, let's see if our electronic voting is working.
Mine is, my computer's not working.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Next up, we have two proclamations, a recognition and a proclamation. First, we are going to recognize Debbie Height for her years of service here with the town of Yountville as our Deputy Director of Public Works. So Debbie, would you please join me at the podium? I have on behalf of the Town Council a certificate of appreciation in recognition of you, Debbie Height, five years of service as a Town of Yountville employee. It's an honor to celebrate five years of dedicated and conscientious service on the part of Debbie Height to the Town of Yountville. Debbie began her career here in August 2014 and has served the town well as Deputy Director in its Public Works Department. Debbie serves as an exemplary model of a public servant dedicated to providing quality service. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know this certificate is important, but the wine too. So now we can get a real picture. There you go. If you'd like to share any thoughts?
Thank you very much. I'm actually, I've actually got 10 years of municipal government service. I came, I came out of the city of Santa Helena into, into Yountville. I think Steve and maybe Samantha and Julie were on my interview board. I, I was sick and they let me, they let me Skype my interview, even though I was only 10 minutes away. But, so even though I've only been working 10 years for municipal service, it seems like I'm retiring early, but I've been working for 40, I think 48 years. I started working when I was 16 years old and like most of us did, to pay for my car. But my three, the three jobs in those 48 years stand out. I, I did 10 months building one of Reagan's Star Wars projects for Hughes Aircraft, and then I spent three years out at Edwards Air Force Base doing flight tests on the stealth bomber for Hughes Aircraft again. And then the five years here were the most fun and rewarding years that I've had in my, my years of, of working. This, I appreciated, I appreciate the opportunity to, to work for this, this group. This, the team here is wonderful and it's a family environment and we, everybody gets along, we do our best and it's a, it's, it's a great, it's great to have a great council too, that backs all the staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
And you're not obligated to stay all night, but you're welcome to.
Well, I might stay through the consent agenda because three of the items are mine, so.
There you go. Next, I'm going to have, gonna go ahead and read this proclamation from the dais. This is a proclamation celebrating the 10th anniversary of the Yountville Community Center. And so many people that are in this room, as well as many that are not in this room, some that are still with the Town of Yountville, but a few that have moved on to other chapters in their life, really made this 10-year anniversary possible about 12 years ago. So with that, this is a proclamation celebrating the 10th anniversary of the Yountville Community Center. Whereas in the 1920s, the Yountville Hall was constructed to house events and operate as a space for community gatherings. And whereas in 1998, the town began a public input and planning process that would result in the Yountville Community Center master plan. Whereas in August of 2008, the Community Center project broke ground with the goal of becoming the quote "front porch" of the community and to operate as a welcoming space to gather and learn. Whereas the center was designed and constructed with the highest level of sustainability in mind, including the building materials, energy-efficient ground source, heating pumps for heating and cooling, and a photovoltaic system that was expanded in 2018 with the addition of a system over the parking area. Whereas on November 24th, 2009, a celebration was held for the grand opening of the 2.5-acre site that consists of the 10,000-square-foot Community Center and library, the 4,800-square-foot renovated Community Hall, 84-space parking area, Yountville's Napa County Sheriff's Substation, and the U.S. Post Office. Whereas the Community Center is the home of, to important historic displays for public viewing, including the 9/11 Memorial, a piece of steel from the World Trade Center, and the George C. Yount Historic Millstones. Whereas in the past 10 years, the Yountville Community Center has opened its doors to over 550,000 residents and visitors of all ages who participated in recreational programs, classes, community events, visited the library, and attended private rental events. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, John F. Dunbar, as Mayor and on behalf of the Town Council, recognize November 24th, 2019, as the 10th anniversary of the Yountville Community Center, and call upon our citizens to celebrate the improved way of life that is achieved through having a Community Center and a dedicated team within the Parks and Recreation Department. Signed, John F. Dunbar, Mayor. And I do want to recognize in particular, not only Samantha Holland, who represents the leadership of our Park and Recs Department, but Lisa Tyler, who is also here, who has dedicated her life over these last, this last decade and beyond to really making this a very special place for our entire community. I'm sure if any of you, and many of you have gone in there, every day Lisa's in there, and she's making sure that it gets used to its maximum. So Samantha, Lisa, our entire Park and Rec team, thank you for making this the crown jewel of our town, and it is the front porch as we envisioned it so many years ago and will be for many more years to come. So, thank you very much. And keep renting that space out. Thank you very much. And thank you for being here tonight also, Lisa. It's always great to have you come and give us a chance to recognize the, the work that you do, because you're, you don't get to come here and, and get the credit that, that you deserve very often, so it's great when we can do that. So, thank you very much. Did you want to share anything with us?
No, I'm good.
I had a feeling, I had a feeling you don't really like to get out in front, so thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to public comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Oh, and we have more of our, so Jennifer Carvalho sneaking in the side door. I hope you heard that?
Yes.
Proclamation, great. Thank you to you as well, and whom I, oh, I know Danielle has joined us recently. They did all this hard work, you have to keep it up. That's the thing. But again, thank you to our entire team that's made the Community Center such a great place for Yountville. Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to public comment. I know Mike, you're, you're here to start us off, so please.
I am. My name is Michael Berg, and I just came to say thank you very much. It's a great segue to say how great the Community Center is. Well, I'm here to say thank you for letting me share it and bring the AIDS Memorial quilt on World AIDS Day for a public exhibition, which was quite successful, supported. Thank you Jeff and Steve and others who helped by the whole town. It was great. It wasn't without our little controversy, but I think it brought forward issues that need to be brought out, and I think we were able to come together and have a very good unified response. The showing itself featured the thing that I love the most. We had 10 youth from LBGTQ Connection who participated in the display, and I think they found the whole thing to be quite affirming. Never forget for a moment that despite all the progress, it's not easy to be a member of the gay community here in Napa County. You've got to go through schools where it can be very difficult. So we need to support our gay and transgender youth, and I'm so glad that you were able to do that with me with this display. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Steve?
Mayor, on behalf of Public Works Director Joe Tegliabashi and myself and our team, we would like to introduce John Ferens, who is our new Deputy Public Works Director. The nice thing about a retirement is generally we have enough lead time to be able to do the recruitment, bring somebody on board, and have a little transition, which we don't always get. So with that, John?
And you have to earn the bottle of wine, so that's, that's still coming.
Welcome, John.
Thank you for having me. I'm very excited about this opportunity. Having worked with Debbie in the past, I know what a void her leaving will be, and I will do my best to fill that void, but I promise I will do my best and I will make you proud, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity. I'm looking forward to it.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing no others, we'll move ahead to our consent calendar, and I am just going to notice that I'll be abstaining from Items 7B and 7H since I was not present for the last council meeting. Are there any other questions or comments about the consent calendar? With that exception, is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Let's try this electronic thing again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do, thank you very much. Michelle, I don't think we have our presenter yet, correct? Or did that person?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
So we're gonna go ahead and move on past our presentation, Item 8A, waiting for Mr. Badawi, I think is who we're still expecting, or a representative. So when that person shows up, we will put them in order. We're gonna move ahead then, since we don't have any public hearings, to Item 10A, our first administrative and regular item, an introduction and first reading potentially of an ordinance as it relates to the banning of gas-powered leaf blowers and disposal of below material. Start with a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight before you is a draft ordinance. Several council meetings ago, a group of Yountville residents provided a presentation along with a number of petitions in support of a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. They made a presentation, and the council provided direction to staff to bring back something for your consideration. So that's what you have before you tonight. I want to point out that the language is focusing on making it a violation of the nuisance section, but I also want to point out that there's a few things that the council may want to give consideration in terms of how the ordinance is crafted, because again, this is a working draft. If you are of mind, you can change things. But a couple elements in particular for you to look at. One, we have a six-month effective date lapse. The idea behind that is to educate and inform people. I think it's appropriate for the council to ask, is, is six months sufficient? Maybe it's not. Maybe it needs to be longer so that we can have an education and outreach period. So that is certainly something that I think the council should provide some feedback on. As you may recall, part of the presentation from the residents, there was some interest in a requirement for bagging, requirement vacuuming and bagging. This ordinance does not include a vacuum and bagging requirement, but it does include a requirement that you can't be blowing stuff onto adjoining neighbors' property, et cetera. We crafted it with a two-hour time limit so that the material can be removed. You may want to consider whether that needs to be in there or not. I mean, the intent behind that is that the property owner is ultimately responsible, but the landscaper, whether there's two hours, there's still something. I'm just again pointing out a few things for the council in terms of what's out there. Council had also asked us what type of grant programs are. Right now, there are no other grant programs. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District has a number of programs, including a program for purchase and acquisition of electric mowers, and then they have a program for agricultural equipment replacement. The South Bay LA Basin District actually has a small grant program, but right now there aren't any grant programs. I wanted to give you a little bit of information on pricing. And I'm just gonna, we have some pricing right out of Home Depot to give you perspective. There's an Echo battery-powered leaf blower at $291, a DeWalt at $249, and an EGO, a higher-performance unit at $329. Comparable gas-powered leaf blower by Echo is $299, Ryobi $199, and an Extreme Power US $350. So you can see at the price points we're starting to get at, there's not a, a big price gap necessarily between the purchase cost of a gas-powered versus the electric slash battery-powered. And I know that it was something the council wanted to look at. I will point out that there are, some of the landscapers use a, a slightly higher-end commercial grade, similar to a product that we use. Those both are in the 550, 600 range, whether they're gas or electric. The electric is slightly more expensive. The offset on electric or battery is that you don't have the maintenance cost in the gasoline purchase. So from a lifecycle cost standpoint, the battery power, it actually is almost coming out a little cheaper. But anyway, I know you had asked about some pricing information, so as you can see, the, the pricing is catching up in terms of being relatively comparable between a gas-powered and a battery-electric. The other thing, and I'll let the town attorney explain, we also added sort of a, a provision to allow for staff to have a little bit more of a process for some catch-all violations and notices, and I'll let Gary explain that.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor and Council. The provision that Town Manager is referring to is subdivision U of the ordinance that's in front of you now. That's a new section that's added to the nuisance ordinance for the town. Reason why staff has proposed adding this in is to give a nuisance standard, as described there in the section, for code enforcement purposes. So one of the things that staff has encountered in the past is not only violations of the code, but also declaring specific things nuisances within town. And so one way to approach it is to come up with a, a completely exhaustive list of things that do constitute nuisances. Another way is to create a standard that can allow a case-by-case analysis of whether or not a nuisance exists. So this is a common provision that's typically included in nuisance ordinances, and it's something that will aid staff in enforcing the municipal code.
So you mentioned Section U. I think, I see Section T is about public nuisance, and then U is about unsafe, dangerous, hazardous. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes. So the opening section of the ordinance says, "Any of the following things are a nuisance and a violation of the code."
Oh, and O.
Yeah, and it lists all the way down to subdivision U, which is the new section that's being proposed.
Okay.
And happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other part of the staff report, or shall I ask?
The only other thing I would say, and I can, I tried to illustrate the type of education and outreach program that the town would do, which would include letters to the property owners, including a copy of information similar to our noise ordinance that we did in English and Spanish, with a request that if they have a landscaper or a gardener, they share that. We could send direct communication to those landscape gardeners that have a business license, and do a, a number of social media, as well as sort of a workshop. We've had a preliminary discussion with a couple of the vendors that are willing to do that. So we know, and I would say similar to our noise ordinance, I'm, I'm not going to be naive. Our, our goal is to educate people first, and the first thing we have to do is educate our residents about the requirement and the responsibility. And then, as Gary was alluding, this really becomes a ticket-type of infraction, and we'll be able to enforce that, in a similar mind to how we've had to deal with the noise ordinance structure. And as you know, the noise ordinance has a level of enforcement. It does require some level of notification, and it's one of the things that the, either town staff during business hours, if it's occurring in the early morning, we have some routine patrols, and also the Sheriff's Department personnel will respond.
Thank you. Questions on the staff report? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, thank you. I believe I understand that the residents themselves, the private residents, are also covered under this ordinance. I know in, we, in my home, we own a battery-powered one that also is a vacuum, so we use that, but we also have a gardening company that helps, so. But I want to just make sure that we're not just looking at the professional gardeners. We're also saying homeowners must comply.
Under most of our ordinance structures, when you have something like that, the property owner is ultimately responsible, but Councilmember Dornbecker, you're correct. The language makes it really clear that a ticket can be given both to the operator and to the property owner. And, and that's just to make sure that the property owner is not encouraging the violation. And again, I'm gonna go out, we don't start with tickets. We start with education and outreach before we go there. So that's not our intent, but every once in a while, as we've learned, some people respond very well to the education and outreach, and, and others don't, and when we have that situation, the fine structure unfortunately is necessary.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Durham?
So the only reference to the noise ordinance in here is just the time. It's not the decibels that are created by a power, by a gas blower as opposed to an electric blower. Is that even in a concern here?
No, because what we're doing here, and that's a, a great question, the hours are part of the noise ordinance. It's the oper, what we've done with this approach is not to get into the decibel measurement, because actually the decibel measurement is very challenging, and in many cases results in the inability to effectively manage the ordinance. What we're basically saying is, if you're operating a gas-powered leaf blower, you're in violation, period. And then we're not getting into the decibels. So that's the way the ordinance was crafted, to make it simpler so that we don't get into an argument about whether it's at 67, 75, or 57. They're just banned. And, and they're banned because, as you may recall from the presentation, there's a number of things. And actually, to the mayor's point earlier about the grant, the reason the Air Quality Board is interested in these is not the noise, they're interested in them from the emissions that are put out by the two-stroke engine. So that's their rationale for getting involved. So there's multiple approaches to why a community may be interested in a ban of the gas combustion engine.
So I have a follow-up question then?
Please.
So can you speak to the e-comment that was made earlier concerning, because you brought up combustible engines? Then can you bring up the, can you speak to the comments that were made? Lawnmowers and trimmers are just as bad. Leaf blowers are only on for a short period of time. Just thinking of all the parks in town and the grassy areas and the condo communities, I would guess that lawnmower pollution overall exceeds leaf blowers in Yountville.
I, first thing I would say is, gas is similar. If you look at the, actually, the Bay Area has a program to encourage replacement with electric. So that's not gonna change in terms of, of that issue. Yountville's a very interesting situation, because a lot of our properties are very small and have small amounts of quote "grass," but lots of material. So I miss, you know, at some point you are going to be finding that some people will be interested in, in looking at that. That is where right now, the Air Quality Board is focusing on the lawnmowers, because it is a, a bigger issue from that standpoint. Again, Yountville's very unique with the nature of most of our yards, small yards and stuff like that, but I can't disagree. The other challenge we have is, the landscape business is not really organized. There's, there's no local trade association. Many of the landscapers and gardeners that are working in Yountville are not doing so with a business license. So it's, it's not really easy to go out and say, "We're gonna send everybody information." It's a unique industry in that sense, and, and that's where we're focusing on the education and outreach, going to the resident with copies for them to give to their landscaper or gardener.
One last question. Do you know of anywhere locally or in the state that's banning lawnmowers and those types of, the gas, the combustible engine for landscaping as well?
I, I'm not aware of a direct ban, and I'm not gonna say there isn't. But what I would say though, the Bay Area Air District Grant Program for lawnmowers is designed for the small residential homeowners, not for the commercial. Now, they're working on getting the larger equipment, but that particular grant really is focused to the small homeowner.
Thank you very much.
I think that was a reference from Denise Hughes, the e-comment that you were making. And since you may, brought that up, I'll bring up now that also Dori Lynn Marchbank submitted information through the Vice Mayor that was presented, presented about the health concerns of leaf blowers. I have a feeling she might be speaking to that directly. She's back there in a moment. So those are the two public comments that we received. But additional questions on the staff report? Councilmember Moller?
I've got a few varied questions. Right now, and you mentioned that this is something that you'd like to hear more detail from us, because you've got currently a recommendation for a six-month effective date. So one of the items is that says a resident shall be as responsible as the, the business that works on his property for prohibiting a leaf blower to be used, that's if what's recommended is gas. So, but how would that resident go about identifying what type of leaf blower his gardening service is using? What's the plan there?
Mike, I, if you're asking me the simple thing, it would be, the homeowner has a conversation with her, with her landscaper and goes, "Are you aware of the requirement? Here's the information," and we'll have that in English and Spanish. So I mean, I, and then they would have to... and then they would have to, but I would say, most people are more aware of it by, you know, they're, they do look very different. The, the battery backpack for a gas combustible engine has a backpack-type structure. The noise is significantly louder on the gas. So, I mean, and that's why I'm saying, we're working on the outreach to, to help that. But that would be the, the homeowner kinda needs to know what equipment they, and they would have to ask their gardener what they're using.
So they would, I think it's fair to say that probably a steep learning curve. I'm, I'm
I'm gonna
I'm just gonna go that
I'm gonna be very honest. It's the same ongoing education and learning curve, because, and I, you know what, some people don't realize, in a small town like Yountville, many of our department heads are actually code enforcement officers. One of the
So, so is the council, by the way.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, but I'm actually a little different than the council. I can actually go out, and when we're doing, you'd be surprised, I still, I can go out and have a conversation with a contractor that just pulled a building permit the day before, where they get a handout in English and Spanish that they sign and acknowledge outlining the noise ordinance, and the person on the site will say, I know nothing about this. So I'm not gonna be naive and tell you, we don't have an ongoing education. In some cases, the owner-manager and the property owner aren't sharing the information. In some cases, they are, and they still just want to do what they want to do, and the contractor wants to start work at seven, even though we have a noise ordinance that says nine. And I would imagine we're gonna have a similar ongoing education.
The public might need a pile of flyers to hand all the people, to make sure that they're in compliance with their responsibilities.
Also say, just like it is with the noise ordinance, it's not a point-in-time education. It's an ongoing education that we're gonna have to do every year seasonally to remind people the same way we put information about the noise ordinance. And, you know, we start with making sure that the homeowners and the people that live here are aware. Because that's generally what happens, is they'll let us know if somebody is continuing to create a, a violation situation.
Okay, so, um, I realize that this is not only a nuisance ordinance, but also something that speaks to emissions. But for right now, just for the noise portion of that, and I know you didn't really want to get into the, the levels, but currently, if we're having, if we have, and I think we do, a lot of gas-powered leaf blowers around town, and we move to electric or battery-powered. Can you speak to how much reduction in noise that we can anticipate, or?
Just based on what's on the equipment, in many cases, you're seeing twenty to twenty-five decibel reduction. So going from the seventy-five to eighty range to lower. One of the ones we're demoing is at fifty-seven that we're using for for our own parks crews. The anecdotal, how does it sound quieter difference tests, the working staff here felt that they were significantly quieter than the gas. But I'm using, that's anecdotal. That's just how people felt between the two. But if you're asking, in most cases, you're seeing a twenty, twenty-five decibel reduction.
And do, do, does the staff need to use them for a longer period of time?
I, I don't know, because in most cases, the leaf blower is being used for the purpose that it is. So I don't know that it needs to be used longer. I mean, the, the gardeners use it to move the debris out of an area and then, you know, gather it. So I don't know that it's gonna take longer. I mean, so you look at the job, and it's the same way, I have to remind people that we used to have a tool that we used before leaf blowers. It's an antique known as a rake and a broom. But the, the thing is, those were the tools that were used before the leaf blower.
That's all I have for now.
Vice mayor, any questions?
Thank you. So I have some questions about the actual leaf blower, but I want to start with you, the catch-all that we, that is being proposed. So as I understand from the town attorney, a typical way is to have sort of a laundry list of this is a nuisance, or this may be a nuisance. But you can also do it the second way of a catch-all. But could we do a hybrid of that to have more of a laundry list, so that there is not so much discretion in what the catch-all is, or so much wondering of, am I committing a nuisance?
Yeah, so, as a point of correction, it's actually common to have both. To have a very long list of things that cause nuisances, things like brush, things like branches that are too close to property lines, dead trees, things that cause vermin, other things that would be considered nuisances within a local jurisdiction. And then to also have a catch-all, because there's frequently a situation where staff will come across something, there won't be a specific thing that applies to it, but yet there can be general agreement that it is in fact a nuisance and should stop. And the way to address that is through a provision like the subdivision U. But yes, I mean, this is certainly a shorter nuisance ordinance, I think, than a lot of cities and counties have. By way of background, state law simply says that the town can determine what a nuisance is, and it leaves it at that. And it's one of many ways that the town can enforce the municipal code. Nuisance abatement has a very special power to it, because once you declare something a nuisance, you can order it corrected by the property owner, and if it's not corrected within a period of time, the town can take steps to correct it itself. And that's unique from other code enforcement. If you just issue a fine, that might bring them into compliance, but it might not. And collecting that fine is a separate issue, but it doesn't bring them into compliance or give the town an additional tool to then go in and abate the nuisance and fix it. So depending on what the code violation is, nuisance abatement can be a way to ensure that it is fixed. Other, uh, either by the person who's committed the nuisance, or by taking steps to correct it, the town directly doing so. And so that's why it's a, one of the tools that the town uses when it's enforcing its code, and it's one of the things that can ensure that a code violation is corrected.
And when you say the town can abate it, then the town leans the property, so that the property owner pays for the town's abatement?
The town could lean the property, or do what's called a special assessment. That's not required in every circumstance. It's an option at the end of the nuisance abatement process. And yes, if the town has incurred costs to actually abate nuisance and correct it, one of the things that staff could consider doing is imposing a lien or a special assessment. That would need to come to council. Staff cannot impose a lien on its own, or a special assessment on its own. There is notice to the property owner, a public hearing before you five, a chance for the property owner to come and, and address you all before that happens. And then of course, a vote by you all before that could occur.
And so, the way it all occurs is, in our system, town manager has the power to write a nuisance citation, our code compliance officer does, and do some of our managers, public works and planning, are they also allowed? My point being, it's already, it's not council who says, we think it's a nuisance. It's our staff who says, we think it's a nuisance.
Yes, so code enforcement officers would determine whether or not there's a violation of the code, and whether or not a nuisance exists. Yes.
And then the appeal of that, let's say somebody gets a citation for nuisance, the appeal to that is also to the town manager or his or her designee.
Correct.
So that never comes to council unless and until there's no final appeal to council unless and until staff wishes to lean the property or give a special assessment.
Yes. And the only thing I, I would add to that before you go on, I don't mean to interrupt. That's the process that's under the administrative enforcement ordinance for all code violations, for any violation in the municipal code. It was adopted by the council, I, I think approximately two years ago, but years are kind of blurring together. So anyway, go ahead.
And then do we, as we are here tonight, do we have any kind of a written protocol or best practices for how an appeal to the town manager is handled? Like, is it done by a third-party neutral, or does the town manager, I mean, do we have anything in writing that talks about how the ultimate appeal gets handled?
In writing beyond the municipal code, no. However, each code enforcement matter and appeal is slightly different. And it's assessed based on the facts and the basis of the appeal, who the enforcement officer was, what the involvement of the town manager was at different stages. And that's always something that staff involves me in, a- as council. And based on those facts, there's a due process analysis essentially that takes place. And if the town manager has been involved, typically, an outside independent hearing officer is brought in to ensure that there's a fair hearing.
But it is up to, and I am giving no offense whatever to our current town manager, I am just trying to parse this out. It is up to the town manager to decide whether or not the town manager will handle the appeal of a nuisance that is not specified in our code, or whether a third-party neutral will handle it.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, to the actual, oh, and there was just one, housekeeping. It says, section four effective date, ordinance takes effect July one, twenty twenty. Does that also for U?
I'm sorry.
Is that also for section U?
Yes, and I would just add
So there's a six-month, you want, you intended a six-month fuse on the U also?
So we didn't, yeah, we chose not to distinguish between the two, and, and actually, everything except for the leaf blower and that new section U is currently on the books. So everything else will still be in effect up until the end of June. And then what will take effect on July one would be the leaf blower provisions in that section U.
Thank you. And then, also on housekeeping, I think under section S, proposed new section S, I think it should be the operation of any leaf blower powered by electricity or battery. I think that was our intent.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And then under S, proposed S two, the last sentence about the, um, anything that gets blown to someone else's property must be removed and disposed of within two hours. If it's not blown to someone else's property, and you stayed, you just blow a big pile onto your own property, do you have to pick it up in two hours?
Nope, that's not my understanding. So, no.
Okay. So, okay. And then I think councilmember Moeller has already pretty much covered my comments on T, the permitting of the use blower. I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Do we know of any other jurisdictions in Napa County that have such an ordinance? Either one of you?
No. Right now, we would be the first jurisdiction in Napa County. We are not the only jurisdiction that has consideration of a ban on the gas as part of their adopted climate action plans. The city of St. Helena and the city of Napa have expressed an interest in what we're doing and are watching that.
And in the staff report, there's a reference to thirty cities statewide, approximately thirty cities that are banning blowers, that's of any kind?
A combination, right. That, that particular, that statement for thirty is correct. Those thirty jurisdictions have banned leaf blowers, gas, battery, and electric.
Okay. And how did you arrive at a six-month effective date, basically July one?
And again, as I mentioned in my introductory comments, it was a, a simple interpretation date on the part of staff. And again, that's why I phrased the question. It's appropriate to ask if that's enough lead time and education, and if the council feels it's not, then, then they make it a year, or whatever the council may feel is the appropriate date.
And the same with the two-hour debris removal, is just basically kind of, get rid of the debris in a timely manner.
You could take the two-hour section out, and you still have the responsibility. And I will point out that one of the big issues that we have in some areas is a lot of debris is actually blown into the public and HOA right away from additional property owners. So the landscapers don't always clean it up. So the intent there is whoever is doing it, you know, should pick it up, remove it. And again, I do know that there are some folks that have strong opinions on the fact that everybody should be using a vacuum with a bagger. And again, we did not address that. We focused on the core issue of, of eliminating the gas combustion engine leaf blower.
And when you give us the specs on equipment to give us a range in the mid, uh, mid-two-hundreds to three-hundreds, that only was for the, the leaf blower unit itself, no battery chargers that, no additional batteries. The assumption is, you have a commercial operation, you're gonna need multiple batteries and charging capacity in order to get through the day, right?
Potentially.
Well, or how long does a battery run?
Yeah, I'm, it varies by the unit, so I know, you know, and I would agree with you that you're gonna have
Ten yards and eight hours of work.
Right. You're gonna have multiple batteries, if that's the case, yes.
Okay. But that number, the reason I'm bringing it up, would need to be factored into the economic impact on a business. It's not just the blower itself, is on, and, and you say it offsets by, you don't have to buy gas, and some other potentially, the units
You are correct.
I don't know if the life cycle of a electric is longer or shorter than
It's actually longer, because the electric motor does not have as many repair items and issues. My biggest point, 'cause I don't, I'm trying not to be an advocate, I'm trying to give you the, the base information on, on pricing, is pricing's coming down. The, the gap between the electric and the gas i- is narrowed considerably. But you are correct. I mean, a commercial operator is probably going to have, you know, a, a need for a, a second or third battery, and then bringing them and using them, just like they have to refill with gas and various things when they go from yard to yard. So, I would say that's a good comparison, yeah.
And a last question for now, I didn't see any reference to any outreach, at least any information received by hotel, other businesses, any commercial operators.
Actually, we have, and the biggest reason is, right now, the Bardasano, for example, does use all-electric. The Thomas Keller Restaurant Group uses all-electric and battery. So, a lot of our businesses have already moved to a battery and electric situation.
But my point is, it would be helpful to know what their learnings are. Do they have, I know there's been talk about these units might be lighter, and therefore less cumbersome for an operator. That might impact, um, health insurance, things like that, but we don't know.
I can't get into that level. I will tell you, they are a lighter unit than a gas.
Okay. One question for Gary. The way I read the proposed ordinance, you've got the following conditions are unlawful and in violation, and then you list everything, most of which is already on the books. Then you get to S, and you kind of flip it a little bit in terms of being proactive. It's, the operator, just trying to read through this, the operator of any blower, blah, blah, under the following conditions, and then it's kind of opposite. I'm not saying it very well, but it's now saying you can't operate, you'd be in violation if you operate between nine PM and nine AM, as opposed to saying when you can operate.
Yes.
So is there a reason that we're, in that one section, we've kind of flipped the proactive wording to being something that's kind of contrary?
Well, we, we tried to draft these all as prohibitions, and so I think even S is. We, we stated basically, it is, it's a violation of the code and nuisance if you operate a leaf blower or other portable machine-powered by electricity leaf blowers under the following conditions. Meaning it's, it's only a nuisance when it's done in that way. And if you're not doing it in that way, it's not a nuisance.
You understand why it gets a little confusing?
I do, I do. And so, um, it could have been stated in the positive, and we could have said, you can operate it between the hours of nine AM and nine PM, instead of not operating between nine PM and nine AM. And that would have been an acceptable way to do it, too. And maybe I'm confusing the issue even more, and I apologize for that.
No. I think that's for council's consideration, that, um, do we want there to be a section as presented, which is our old-fashioned nuisance conditions, sections one, A through R, or A through Q, or roughly A through Q, and then we get into this kind of, I'm calling it a reversal of the way you're describing things. Should we have somewhere where you explicitly can operate? But that wouldn't necessarily be under the nuisance ordinance. It would be a separate ordinance about the use of leaf blowers.
Correct. And we tried to follow the language in current section. And we tried to follow the language in current section O, which makes a general prohibition under certain conditions, 1 and 2, to kind of mirror the ordinance as a whole.
Again, I'm bringing this up for consideration for the council because basically this entire ordinance says you can't do this. And then this one section, you say, you can't do anything we've said, but you can do it as long as you're not doing it during these times and in this way. Because the way I read S is now we're saying the allowable electric battery-powered still can't be used in these other ways. You know what I-
Yeah, so I still read section S as a prohibition. It's that you cannot use an electric leaf blower under those conditions.
Agreed. But you're now talking about when you can, you're talking about a piece of equipment you can use, just not this way.
Correct.
Where the rest of the ordinance, I feel like it says, you can't do any of this stuff no matter what.
Correct.
And so I'm just bringing it up so that if we're comfortable with that language, it can be read in a kind of a confusing way. You look at this at a cursory level, you say, you can use it at 9 o'clock at night? No, that's when you can't. Even a battery-powered blower.
Yeah.
Okay. Steve, did you have something?
I was just going to point out that the educational information outreach would not necessarily reflect all of the ordinance. It would be written more in the way you were talking about in terms of how that is. But I think both of us understand the question in terms of, because you have a list of prohibitions, and then you're saying, because even using the electric or battery leaf blower, you can't use it those hours, and you can't blow stuff onto the neighbor's property. So you're right, it makes it challenging from that perspective.
Okay. Any other questions, Councilmember Dornbecker?
I just wanted to clarify that the noise ordinance would prohibit it being used after 6:00 PM. Isn't that correct? So you can't use it, you know, between 6:00 and 9:00 PM, isn't that true?
I think that is correct, so we probably should-
Steve, your mic.
I think that is correct, Councilmember Dornbecker, so we may want to change that to 6:00 PM.
Yeah, thank you.
To that point, I remember when we were talking about hours of construction at home, we were concerned about making it so restrictive that somebody that was going to work after they get home couldn't do it if they didn't get home before 6:00. And I think that that's something that we need to consider. If we're now talking about getting, banning the loud stuff and allowing the quieter stuff, and now you can't even do it after 6:00 PM, that might be more punitive and restrictive than we want.
It could be, and again, that's a good discussion point for the council because that is different than the contractor type of noise. Because contractor noise tends to go on for a longer period of time than does gardening work. Just in terms, most of the yards that we have are more on a half-hour type cycle. So I think that's a fair consideration for the council.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple.
Councilmember Mueller.
So back to economic impact. I would like to delve in a little more to the property owner cannot, which section is that one? Property owner has as much responsibility, there we go, the third page, as the gardening service. So, it says permitting use of a leaf blower on one's property in a manner that is a public nuisance. So that would be something that is loud, or a gas-powered, I guess specifically. So when we have a lot of absentee owners, so is that going to be part of our outreach to, you know, if they're never there, how are you going to, you know, make them responsible? I'm just trying to figure out the logistics of how this is actually going to work. And then I do want to talk about life cycles of these leaf blowers and whether we're really going to have an economic impact of whether we do something in six months versus a year, so.
The short answer is, it's really no different than we have, I'll use the rental registration. The rental registration ordinance requires that a person that is placing an advertisement for the rent of their home needs to publish their town permit number. So sometimes they use an agent, and the agent fails to do that. And then we cite them, but they both get cited because ultimately, and we've communicated to that. So the first thing is that there will be, you know, several letters going out to the property owners, letting them know. So, I mean, that's the approach that we would take in terms of letting them know what their requirements are, encouraging them. And again, that's why I say it's not a one-time issue. It's a many, you know, a number of letters because the homeowner ultimately is responsible for the conduct that goes on at the home on any number of ordinances and requirements that we have. So that part's no different in terms, and no different than our approach would be, you know, we send a letter to the property owner first, letting them know, hey, you may not be aware of this, but this is an issue, could you please fix it? And if they fix it and resolve it, then nothing further happens. And we do that, like I say, with rental registration violations, with a whole range of code enforcement. And just in the 13 years that I've been here, just for the vice mayor's comment, all of the appeals have been done by a third-party neutral. It's just, you know, there, in this agency, the nature of the communication and information approach is too close. So I'm just saying that's something just from a practical standpoint, you know, I take very seriously when we look at what's the appropriate. Because in most cases, staff is working on something, and I'm involved in providing direction or input to it. So it's just, and, you know, fortunately, we haven't had too many. I also think, as the council may be aware, we've had three that you're aware of that have gone to a lean situation. So again, it's not something that happens a lot. And it certainly, I'm dealing here more with the new section about the potential than I am, you know. We're not going to be having any type of, that type of a situation with somebody getting a ticket for a noise ordinance violation or a leaf blower ban violation.
Okay, so back to economic impact, do we have any information?
Actually, sorry, if I can interrupt, because before you get off of that section T, I want to ask Gary, because I have a question about this sentence as well. Having to go back to the, basically the title entry, the following conditions are unlawful, a violation of this code, and a public nuisance, permitting use of a leaf blower on one's property that is a public nuisance. So you're saying that's to catch a property owner who's not enforcing it with a contracted operator?
Or if the property owner themselves does it. We do have a handful of property owners that maintain their own property.
So I'm just wondering if this could, would be clearer to the general public if we said something to that effect, which is, a property owner cannot allow or operate an unlawful blower. This, this is hard to understand, this sentence.
Yeah, so I'll just speak to the intent of how that was drafted. And the last part of the sentence, that is a public nuisance under this section, was meant to capture the other R and S sections. And so it's only a violation if the property owner allows it in a manner that otherwise violates the section. Meaning you're using an internal combustion engine blower, or you're using an electric-powered blower under the conditions as specified in S 1 and 2. And so it wasn't meant to expand anything beyond what's already prohibited, only to make it clear that a property owner could be also found to be committing a nuisance by allowing operation and violation of those sections.
Could you achieve the same thing by saying a property owner or a contracted user cannot violate any of the previous conditions? I mean-
Yes, and I think that's already true. So I, I'm-
This sentence is kind of legalese that gets confusing, in my opinion, so let's maybe-
Yeah, so I guess what I would say, it, the administrative enforcement ordinance that would apply to enforce this section makes, always makes a property owner a potentially responsible party. That's already true. And so if this sentence is confusing, I think removing it does not change the law at all and still gives that authority to staff.
But it might require us to identify that a property owner is also liable for following this ordinance. It's not just a commercial operator. And therefore, the intent of the, this sentence, I think, is valid. Not sure that the way it's written is clear enough. So just throw that out there. I know Councilmember Mueller had other points that she wanted to make.
Well, I'm just really trying to understand because I would imagine that some of the public would be concerned about the economic impact, depending on when we're going to do stuff, and just how much information we have and how much information we don't have in terms of the life cycle of a leaf blower. I mean, if we, for example, if we do something in six months, you know, some leaf cycle, I mean, leaf blowers are older and some are newer. But general, do we have any information about how old, like a gas-powered leaf blower, two-stroke engine has to be before it runs its life?
I didn't do any analysis on that, so I'm not, not going to indicate-
So we could be throwing, or not, some of the gardeners could be throwing away or not using what they have potentially, depending on-
Here's what I do know in general in talking with some folks. Those that are heavy, heavy use, a leaf blower is something that is generally worn out in a three-to-five-year period for a commercial operator. So there, I want to go back to the price point. They're not that expensive. They get, they get, you know, they reach, so I don't know that. I mean, we haven't done a detailed study. I haven't, if you want to do that, I can try to figure out how to do research.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just providing information to possible residents who could come back and say, my rates are going to triple. And we'll have some information about, it's not likely to happen.
I don't know that that could be the case based on, you know, like I said, the pricing information that we provided earlier shows you that they're $30 to $40 or comparable, you know. So the higher-end one may be about $50 more than a gas-powered for the initial purchase. And then you do have, as the mayor alluded to, the chargers and some stuff like that. So when you average that out, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that it would necessarily result, you know. The issue there is going to be, the larger licensed gardening operations, not a big issue for them. I think where you find, you have a lot of potential gardeners that do side jobs. You know, they may work in a vineyard during the week, and then they do stuff. They're the ones that are probably going to have, you know, maybe they're not, this was not the year they're replacing their leaf blower. And, but they're also the ones that don't tend to have a business license. So that's a harder one for us to get information on.
And then one last question on compliance. So let's just assume that this is approved pretty much with, you know, various modifications, and the ordinance takes effect. What is the best procedure for either a homeowner who hears something or somebody, you know, thinks they, somebody else is out of compliance? What would be the recommended action to that person?
I'm going to echo what I always say along with Sergeant Holman. This is a point-in-time violation, and our deputies along with town staff are responsible for enforcing the municipal code. So it's important to call the non-emergency number and report it, and then they'll get a field incident report, and then staff will follow up with the property owner and, to the degree possible, with the gardener. And that's also why in many cases, we have to use the property owner because a lot of the unlicensed gardening firms, they don't have any identification on their vehicles or a business license. So we'd have to reach out, and it would be an education approach first. So, I mean, that's why I'm not going to be naive, or, you know, it will have a very similar education or curve that we had when we changed our noise ordinance.
And so basically, with that information, on the weekends or after hours, they would be instructed to call our sheriff department? Okay. And then town staff during regular business hours?
And we would mark, I mean, we do that all the time. It's really important that our residents recognize they're not bothering the deputies. That's how we get a field incident report that has a, you know, in this case, a law enforcement's a third-party neutral that can determine that, yes, something, whether it's a noise ordinance, was occurring at that point in time. Or if it's this case, they can make a determination that somebody was using a gas-powered when they shouldn't have. And that's important to document. The same way, you know, staff may be in the field and able to do the same thing, but not always in the same point. And especially on, and I'm bringing both up because it's noise ordinance as well as the, you know, operation.
Okay, that's my questions.
I think we got through what was supposed to be the brief questions on the staff report portion. So we are at the public comment stage of this. You've heard that they, we received a couple ecomments from the public. Also, before we, I invite members of the audience to ask their questions or make comments, want to recognize the residents that put in significant amount of work and research. I know they reached out to the council and staff over the last few months. And thank you for doing that homework. We ask that people don't just come here and say, here's a problem, fix it, to actually help with some background, which you all did, that's much appreciated. So thanks for that. And I would invite, if you'd like to start, any of you that first brought this forward. Yes, we will be, so if any of you that did initiate this effort would like to come forward, we are going to enforce the three-minute public comment period to make sure everyone that wants to speak does have a chance to do so. And you don't want to make Michelle angry with that timer. Well, you're in charge of the timer. Okay, so please. And thank you for bringing some holiday spirit with you this evening.
You're welcome. Good evening. I'm Doyleene Marchbanks, I live on Jasmine Street-
Put that down a little bit, please.
In Washington Park. I appreciate the fact that our town council listened to our presentation on October 1st and took action to draft an ordinance prohibiting the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. I thank our town manager, Steve Rogers, our town attorney, and also Joe Tagabashi for the work and help on this. The committee spent a year researching the effects of leaf blowers. At that meeting, we presented over 218 signatures on a petition which read, "We, the citizens of the town of Yountville, are concerned about excessive noise and pollution. We petition the town council to take a leadership role and adopt an ordinance to phase out gas-powered leaf blowers. As an alternative, electric or battery-operated leaf vacuums will be accepted." I would therefore request that we add to this draft a time period to phase out the use of blowers, perhaps over a two-year period, and at that time, permit only vacuums. The process of blowing particles in the air is man-made, pollution, and is detrimental to our health. While we don't have a lot of control over pollution, in this case, we have control and are able to stop endangering our health. There are already a number of towns and cities within California and across the United States that have banned leaf blowers entirely. We're not asking that. To touch on a couple of things tonight, what Steve was saying regarding the education on this, the committee met with Steve, and we all volunteered to participate in that. And as a second note, my daughter and I just bought a blower vacuum by Still. And it was, this is for some properties in Napa that we own, for our gardener, for $226.19. I respectfully request that we consider science and evidence-based information- I respectfully request that we consider science and evidence-based information and do what's best for the health of the citizens of our beautiful town. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Who would like to come next?
Hello, councilmembers and staff. I'm Penny Proto at 1971 Yountville Crossroad, and I was one of the community members who worked on this, and our goal was to try and get to the vacuum, to the electric or battery-powered vacuum because of the particulate matter that is blown up into the air. But I noticed the town already has, in a way, accepted a lot of that because every Friday there's this wonderful street cleaner, which is a vacuum with brushes, and it works very well. And it, so it's a nice thing to see that, and I'd like to see vacuums adopted in the future. And I understand there has to be a time limit as to when we can have it roll in. But thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any of the other original residents group? Yes. You're all here, so you might as well each take a shot at it.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and staff. I'm Janet Claire Gottsch, Vista Drive. I did want to make a couple of points really quickly, and that was to remind everybody that the, our climate action plan includes cutting back on greenhouse gases, and this is a great way of doing it. In fact, the California Air Resources Board says that, well, by next month, next year, 2020, gas leaf blowers will become the leading source of ozone-forming emissions in the state, ahead of cars. Also, regarding the time of the phase-out, I went over a lot of the ordinances in the different cities throughout California, and quite often, it was four months to six months. I, it was, I don't think I saw one year recently in Sanitas, well, in fact, it takes place January, and they had a four-month phase-out. And, and then we had talked about a town-wide workshop where we will get a chance to meet with the citizens and the landscapers and see if we can edu, help with education. And then also, last thing, in Sanitas, they have a joint powers authority with several other cities, and they're offering a rebate for the gas blowers. So that's something to consider, to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sherri, you're the only one that hasn't spoken. No? Okay. Any other members of the public like to comment?
Hello, Bruce Tosker, 22 Landi Way. I applaud the activity towards eliminating the, the gas blower, but I also like to just speak, not on my behalf, but on behalf of dozens, if not hundreds, of very hard-working people that are out here taking care of our lawns that don't have the financial independence that we've got. I've become an expert in 20 minutes looking up leaf blowers online, and yes, you can get one for $200, but to get a professional one with multiple batteries, you're talking five or 600. And I question how many of these people can go out and do that in three months. I love the comment about looking at financial impact and maybe look at that a little bit and say, "What is the life of these blowers?" And if it's a year, give these poor folks at least the time to use the investment that they've already made and then replace with a battery unit when their gas one runs out. Thank you.
Thank you. Isn't it nice to have a, an abundance of information in your pocket at all times?
Good evening. Whitney Diver McAvoy, Yountville Chamber of Commerce. I would like to applaud the ladies for their fantastic work on the electric and vacuum leaf blowers and the opportunity that it could present for our town. I would like to ask if the council could slow down a little bit on this. I feel like we've moved extremely fast, and it hasn't given us an opportunity to have a full dialogue with everyone in our community, including our business community. Somebody asked me today where the business community stands on this, and I honestly could not tell you because we haven't had a lot of time to start having those conversations with our businesses. Bardisono and TKRG, of course, are very high-profile businesses within our community, but there are many more that are here. So I would encourage you to slow down a little bit. I also agree on the financial impacts for the folks that are working in our town, and also, what does this mean to the comments of gas-powered lawn mowers and tree trimmers, as the e-comment said? So that was my request, very simply. So again, congratulations to the ladies for putting together a great presentation. Not that I don't agree with you, but I'm hoping that we can have a little bit more time to work out some of the finer details. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're all here for our CAFRA presentation that's coming up in a minute? He's here, by the way. He made it. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'll entertain discussion by the council. Would anyone like to begin the discussion? Councilmember Doran Becker, you look, you look more than ready.
Well, I could tell by the look on your face that I was...
That was the look.
I was the one. I'm delighted that this has come forward. I served as co-chair of our Climate Action Plan Committee, or the Go Green Team, and several of these brilliant young women were on that committee. I do also feel that six months' education is not enough because of the economic impact, actually. I, I think that we can still pass this ordinance as long as we give adequate time for the adjustment, and I don't know whether it's a phase-in situation where we, you know, phased it in over one to two years, or however it is structured. But we do have to do this. The, and, and I also agree that it is much better for the environment to have them vacuumed rather than blown around because even if you blow them into a big pile, when you pick up the pile, all of the other kinds of things, the pesticides that are in the air and have been used on the, you know, greenery and shrubbery, that's all, there are particles that have, you know, landed on the ground anyway, and now we're going to blow them all in the air. And as someone who has asthma, I, I really would prefer that we do amend the ordinance to, to encourage at least the vacuum so that it does pick up the, all of the particles instead of just the leaves. Otherwise, I mean, I think that this is, it's actually been a long time coming. We've been talking about this since 2016, and we talked about it on our Climate Action Plan for the 18 months that we were working on that, and we passed that in 2016. So it's just, I think the, the time is now, but give enough latitude for the adjustment. That's my personal take.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham, I'm still looking this way with this look on my face.
I looked the other way, it didn't work. So I don't have a gl, I don't have a gas blower. I have a, I have a sweeper, and actually, I got a new electric blower this morning that blew lovely in the wet leaves, so I'm very much for that. But I want to say this, I, I think we all, everybody talks about sustainability, but I think we also need to talk about responsibility. I think we all owe a responsibility to ourselves, a responsibility to our, our community, a responsibility to our neighbors, and definitely a responsibility to the environment as we discuss this moving forward. I asked about combustion engines earlier, and I think that the e-comment that was made was very valid. There is an HOA in town that has probably more grass than all of Old Town combined. So how do we take that into account moving forward? I think that's something that deserves a lot more discussion, is not just gas blowers, but other combustion engines in town. So with that being said, we're talking about one aspect of business. I, it will have an economic impact, I believe, on the individual landscapers. As for the businesses in town, I, I, they can, they can absorb this. They can absorb this and move forward. I'm, I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned about the smaller landscapers. I'm concerned about the individuals who are doing a second business to try to be successful on their own. What I'd like to see is, as Mr. Tenscher brought up at the last time this was discussed, was a possible rebate program for some of those people, especially because I want to come back to the fact, I want to talk about all combustion engines if we're going to have this discussion. I don't want to piecemeal this moving forward and have another group come forward in six months as we all get behind getting rid of all combustion engines. I'd rather have it be a part of this discussion moving forward. We've laid the groundwork here, and I think that we have a very good start here. I'd like to see possibly more work on it, if the group is also amenable to that, to have that moving forward, to see what we can add to it then. And once again, I'm going to, I, you know, I, I'm very fortunate to live in Yountville. I believe the businesses are very fortunate to be involved here. So I think we all owe some responsibility to this community as well as to the environment to take this another step further than if we're going to do it. So therefore, it's six months is not going to work for me. It needs to definitely be at least a year so that we can talk about phasing other, other equipment into this discussion and not just a leaf blower. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I, I think the, the good aspects of this, we probably can all agree for our residents. I don't think you can probably find anybody who likes the noise of the leaf blowers that we hear. But I, I think I agree with the two previous comments that if we're going to do this in typical Yountville fashion, I really want to get it right. And I, while I do appreciate, there have been a lot of people who've spent a lot of time on this, it's the first time that it's really come to us for consideration, and I think everyone can respect the amount of time we've had this discussion tonight, that there, there are quite a few issues, and it's really the, it's always the unintended consequences of some of these things that I think it's worthy of a little more time. So I also agree, I would like a little more time. There's a, a few things we can work with staff on getting more information, even if we reach out to some of the public now that they, they know we've had some of this initial conversation and the rest of our, our businesses, and, and, you know, make this the best that we can by hearing what they have to say after this discussion. I think, I think we can come up with the best solution for Yountville. So I'd be willing to give it some more time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I echo Councilmember Mueller on saying thank you. I know a lot, a lot of work has gone into this, and it certainly is appreciated, and as she said from our discussion, you can tell you certainly have everyone's attention. So I, I'm kind of just going to go through some points here in no specific order. I think six months probably is a little short. I probably would like to see closer to a year. And part of that is, goes to my second point of who really should get the nuisance citation and the economic impact. Because although Yountville, people think of us as a really wealthy community, many of our residents are not. Many of them truly are on a fixed income. If we are going to cite them for their gardener using a gas blower, when, and maybe to use a gardener with an electric blower, it goes up $5, $10, $50. Maybe that's not doable for them. So I'm, I really don't see that T is particularly necessary. I think it should just be, if you're using the blower, you get the citation. The two hours, again, I'm not sure that sentence is necessary because you, you have to keep it on your own property. But maybe what we should add there is something that says, "Once you blow it into a pile, you do have to gather it up within a reasonable time." Whether it's on your property, well, it should only be on your property because according to the previous section, if it's not on your property, you've created a nuisance. So maybe we tweak T a little bit to say, "Gather it up." On the hours, I kind of think 8:00 AM is a good start time because, again, I am one of those people who does my own yard, and I do have a blower, but I do not use it, mostly because I don't get along with it that well. It is electric, but I many times start at 8:00 AM, especially in the summer when it's hot. So I, I sort of see 9:00 AM as, and, and the evenings, I think 9:00 PM is too late, but 6:00 PM is too early. So somewhere in between there. The vacuum is interesting to me because I can see that as some sort of end result, but I'm wondering if a way to do it is to incentivize the vacuum and maybe even incentivize going to the economic impact and the useful life of a leaf blower. Maybe you did just buy one six months ago, but maybe we incentivize you, if in the first three months the ordinance is active, you buy something, you get X incentive, and it gets lower as time goes on. And maybe we have a specifics for a vacuum, which is the end goal of, of many people. So I, I would sort of like maybe for us to explore that. And as to where the money comes from, well, we'll, I guess we'll soon start budget season again because, although we, our fiscal year doesn't end until June, but, you know, that's something we would have to look at as a council to find out if the town were going to incentivize anything. And then, just one other thing on U, the new catch-all. I can be persuaded on that if there comes along with it some sort of a written standard operating procedure. Because as I said, I understand what happens now with our current staff, but I am trying, and I appreciate it beyond belief. I am just trying to look ahead to when we have sort of an open-ended nuisance and maybe things change, and somebody gets a burr in their blanket for somebody else, and it doesn't go well. So I'm just thinking it's probably prudent to have some, you know, three-sentence, this is our best practice model. And I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start with the practical part about the ordinance language, the way it's written, because I'm, we're not adopting anything tonight. I think that's pretty obvious based on the comments we've heard, but progress is going to be made, and we're going to revisit this soon. I'll leave it up to our town attorney. You've heard my feedback on those two items, T and U, about whether they, especially T, whether they might be clearer with some different language, but I'll defer to you on whether this is the best way to present that from a legal perspective. That's fine. So going forward, I'm comfortable the way the ordinance has been crafted. I also don't, I agree that July 1, 2020 is too soon for a couple reasons. One, because it's too soon, but also, well, two other reasons. One, I would suggest January 1 of 2021. It's when all the other state laws go into effect, and everybody's recognizing the fact that there are new laws on the books and people have to behave differently. I think that would make sense. I was trying to think about, well, is January the right time to have a leaf blower ordinance when we've just, hopefully cleaned up most of the leaves through the winter? But that one's too hard to try to calculate. But I think January 1 to start the new calendar year does align with some of the other laws going into effect. Also, though, it makes sense to have a little bit more lead time because we are in a countywide climate action and climate awareness phase right now with ad hoc members from every jurisdiction already discussing things. It was mentioned, a couple of the cities in Napa County are already considering this. I'm very comfortable with Yountville... I'm very comfortable with Yountville being the lead on this and getting the credit for really pushing us through. But if we treat this like we treated Marin Clean Energy, for example, when each jurisdiction was asked to evaluate going greener and then collectively, all the cities, the town and the county went with MCE to create a more environmentally sustainable outlook on energy operations, we can do the same thing here. When we go next to the 2x6 countywide climate action committee, we can represent that we are moving forward with this ordinance. Everyone else that wants to get on board, here is our draft language. See if it works for you as well. We could potentially have a greater impact as a county if we all do this together. Because we know there are concerns that things just outside of our town limits impact us. And if we then have the support of the unincorporated county, then I think we can be even more effective. It also speaks to, local businesses will be more aware of what our rules are when they are rules countywide. And if it's, you can't use gas power in Napa, or you can use them in Napa, but you have to use electric or a battery. In Yountville, if it's, you have to go to battery everywhere, it makes it a lot easier for that education. I also still want to hear, by the next time we discuss this, some business perspective. How many of our businesses already are doing this? We've named two. But how many else? How many others? What those impacts might be to our businesses? Because this is not just about our residential neighborhoods. This is going to be throughout town. And a little bit more information about the economic impacts. You know, we've talked about what's the longevity of the existing equipment? Are we asking people to throw away an investment that is going to be a little more punitive than we want? Or is it that the lifecycle by January 1 of 2021 is that they know it's coming? They've got a year's worth of use out of it. By January 2021, if you bought something in December, then you've got to go somewhere else to use it, maybe even outside the county. So I do think that we can visit researching more grant opportunities. I'm a little surprised at Northern California air quality. The control board is not as progressive on this as the Southern California version, providing some subsidies for that. But we can also have that conversation ourselves about, do we want to try to put some type of resources toward this effort? I would stick with 9:00 AM start time on the use of blowers. It matches our noise and any other commercial work. I think having different start times for different things gets very confusing. And I'm not sure about, I think I agree with the Vice Mayor, 9 o'clock, 9:00 PM is too late, 6:00 PM is too early. I don't know if we can craft it to be no use after dark to allow it to be seasonal. Summer months when people are getting home and it's still comfortable to have that, it's not as much of an impact on the dinner hour and people's quiet time. So maybe considering that unless we need a hard number. We've done that with some of our business operations, and it seems to work pretty well. So I think what you're hearing from all of us is, we still support this effort, and we applaud you for getting us to this point. There's some tweaking that we need to do to try to make it really as effective as we would like it to be. I'm going to look now at Steve and Gary if there's more guidance you need from us on.
Yep.
Okay, I had a feeling, because you gave me that look.
Yep. The first thing is, a number of the nuances are pretty straightforward. We can give you a draft back on some of those. The one about more and doing it right, I need a little more definition. What type of other equipment? Or are you talking about trying to ban gas lawnmowers? So I need some more specificity with regards to what that is.
Well, we keep referring to the Climate Action Plan. What does the Climate Action Plan say? Does it say combustible engines? Does it say lawnmowers? Does it say all gas engines? What does it say?
It's focused on leaf blowers.
Only leaf blowers?
The, you don't have, and I will say this was a certain level of uncertainty. Homeowners, and I will say, this is the one area, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District does have a lawnmower rebate program. So homeowners, there really isn't a large-scale, commercial, electric mower right now. So that would be something for the larger turf areas, and I would put the town in that category. You know, we wouldn't, you know, it would change our operational costs significantly to move from a powered lawnmower, larger scale, to, you know, pushing for some of our large turf areas, and there's a handful. So I'm just trying to make sure I can try to understand the various issues. But again, the Climate Action Plan focuses on leaf blowers. If the town council wants to develop a rebate program, my recommendation would be that you continue that dialogue, provide us some feedback. That wouldn't necessarily need to be in the ordinance because that could be in the resolution recital because in most cases, a rebate program is going to be for a certain specified time period. And it, for example, I heard some comments that maybe we incentivize the bagger option only. And you know, you could do it something. So I think there's some things that we could work on if that's truly something that the council's interested. I'm pretty good at at least trying to do the research to find operation. And I just, there isn't anything I could find short of us using our own, creating our own program right now. There isn't a state program that our area qualifies for. It is a little bit hard for us to do a lifecycle analysis on this scale. I mean, this is not long-term operating equipment. I mean, the individual homeowner may keep theirs for a while. So that one's a little more challenging for us, but we'll do our best to try to get you some additional information on that. And certainly, we can talk with some of the other business communities. I think you're giving us the kind of feedback on, you know, longer lead time so that people have the opportunity to know what's coming. And that's why the ordinance was written the way it is. It's banned, but the effective date is further out. So that's, so you've given us some feedback that we can work on bringing back, but I'm just trying to make sure that we're addressing all of the elements because that's the hardest one for me to understand, is if you're saying, what else is in there? Or if you're saying, do we want to do it regionally at the county? I think that could be a conversation.
We'll recognize also that the county has already invested. I believe they put $100,000 into the climate action effort unrestricted at this point. So if we are looking at this countywide, that might be a start to have some kind of.
It could be. Right now, the county does not have an adopted climate action plan. So, I mean, to me, you know, the ad hoc representatives, yourself, Councilmember Dornbecker, I don't know what the appetite for a regional discussion on this would be. That is certainly an appropriate item for you to bring to that body. Ultimately, all of the jurisdictions would have to adopt it because the jurisdictional authority rests with each individual agency. But again, that, you know, if you want to, you know, have that conversation and see what the interest level is, Gary and I can work on a few of the nuances. But again, the, you know, most of those are not significant. It's that broader, you know, are, you know, what's your definition of doing it right?
Combustion engine, then? I mean, I understand, it comes back for me personally, responsibility. At what point will it be mandated? At what point can we get ahead of it? You know, I don't think our plastic band bag did enough. It wasn't written for Yountville. I think we have an opportunity, if we're going to do this, to step up and do it right and lead by example. And economic, I mean, economic impact needs to be factored into our budget then if we're going to be moving forward. I mean, how much do I need to listen about climate change recently to talk about economic impact in 2020 and 2030? I mean, we can make our choices. I'm just putting it out there that if we're going to talk about this, it's a good start. But should we keep doing more? I mean, the Ecom, and I think, was very valid in what she said. If we're going to have this conversation, let's not just pat ourselves on the back and say, we did this good thing. Let's see what we can really do to affect change and be responsible and set the example for the rest of the county to move forward with us then and have a countywide incentive program. Or all of the county agreeing that this is the right way to move because we've chosen to do that. We're having this discussion now, and so it's time to bring it up then. So that's my thought.
I think that we should keep focused on the leaf blower issue for now. I think we could absolutely modify this in the future if, after some additional research, we determine that it's a reasonable, and I get what you're saying about being aggressive about it is not a bad thing. But being too quick with it might have consequences that we don't intend. We can make an effect that I think is going to be very measurable and noteworthy if we go this direction right now. It might need to be incremental. The one thing I forgot to mention earlier, Gary, your thought on, I like the idea of adding the vacuum requirement some period of time later. Are you comfortable adding another effective date for another layer of requirement? Or should that be handled separately, do you think?
Yeah, we can do that.
So I don't know if the council would support, if we like the idea of January 1, 2021 being effective for this and say, January 1, 2022 for the vacuum requirement, again, giving people ample time and technology, frankly, to provide potentially more options for the industry. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, on that point, I mean, I really, for tonight's discussion, really focused on two-stroke gas engine, electric engines, the batteries that went in there. I don't really know if I know what questions to really ask about the vacuum yet. So I'm not prepared to go one way or the other because I really wasn't prepared for that discussion. So it does look like we're going to put a bit of a pause here. And, you know, maybe that is something that more information could come back. I mean, is it feasible? I mean, we do have town staff who uses this equipment. I would like a little more information on if you really have an electric piece of equipment. How much longer does it take? Even though we have anecdotal information, but this from our town staff, you know? Let's get some information there. What's the feasibility of using bags? Are they available? You know, that's the kind of information that I think I can make some really good decisions. We might not, there might not be, you know, half a dozen wonderful published scientific studies, but at least we can have some information that would help us make a decision.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, well, I do support having the one year to January 2021. But I believe that we should move forward at this stage with the leaf blowers as we have discussed. Is there any, are we able to add additional pieces of equipment to that as time goes by?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, but I don't think we should put off until then banning the leaf blowers. I think we should do that now.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I agree that we should move forward now with the leaf blowers. For the vacuums, I understand, and I have some of your same concerns, Councilmember Mueller, of kind of what is it? How does it work? I appreciate, Mayor, your thinking, maybe two years. But that's why I'm coming back to sort of my incentive that we sort of super incentivize vacuums or super rebate, I think, to use your word, Councilmember Durham, and see how that works. I mean, maybe we have a lot of people who use vacuums. We don't even know how many people who have vacuums versus have blowers. So I think we could go ahead and build that in, not into the ordinance, but as part of our programming. And then we always have the opportunity to come back and go, okay, now, in 2021, we're going to do this. In 2022, we're going to do this. So I think we could maybe have the best of both worlds on that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Do you need any clarity, Gary?
So I've taken notes on all the suggestion and where there seems to be consensus. I've also noted that. So I think in the next draft, that's what will come out. And then, of course, we can always revise it and do another first reading. And if there's additional changes, we can always do that, too.
And just one more minor point. I know I read number R over and over just because of today's world. We have generators that we never thought about before. They're combustion engines. They're very noisy. And R says the operation of any leaf blower or other portable machine powered with an internal combustion engine used to blow leaves, which is good. But just make sure that we don't remove any of that language because it really spells out that it does not apply to generators, which I have a feeling we're going to be buying. Our community is going to be owning more and more combustion engine generators in the future, but we'll see.
You can bet there'll be legislation about the emissions of the generators soon.
Yes, we know that's coming, too. Anyway.
So I think direction, if the council agrees, the direction would be an effective date of January 1, 2021. We are going to move forward on the focus on leaf blowers specifically for now with additional research on other equipment that might fall under other jurisdiction, whether it's state law or other regional requirements. We will bring it up at the Climate Action Committee in the near term. And we'll continue to evaluate whether there's some financial incentives or grant opportunities that could help with the transition over the next 13, 14 months, I guess we, 12 months we'd be talking about. So that gives you enough clarity?
It does.
Do we have the ability to say when, other than sometime in the early 2020?
I'm going to say, the, I think there's consensus on a number of things, but not all of the things from what I'm hearing. So bringing you a draft back in early January, I think, is very achievable. Some of the research, I'm not sure because, just to be honest, that's a unique level of research. And how much staff time do we want to allocate given the, some of the current issues? So I'd ask for some guidance from you on that in terms of where you want your staff focusing.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, just start with our staff. Our staff has been evaluating, and I'd just like everybody to hear what they found out. Does it take longer? Do they, are they quieter? Just, you know, some.
I think there may be three or four very fundamental bits of research to do. One is to confirm the lifespan of current equipment and how, if it's one to two years commercially used, then it's not even an issue.
Right.
If it's five to 10 years, then it's a burden. We also need to hear from our business community. We need to hear from the industry itself. There might be something that we're not aware of, like the issue of how heavy are these battery packs potentially going to be? Is it an insurance issue for their employees? That type of thing, we want to know before we go too far forward. And if there's something else that you think of, or Joe and our Public Works team that would be most knowledgeable about the activation of all this, then you've got your source of information.
The actual weight of the battery units is less than the combustible engine with the gas. But we'll get you that to the best that we can.
So we will shoot for one of our meetings in January. We're not going to commit to a date certain.
A grant program, I'll work on a structure, but that would be a budget discussion item. And you guys could, as we go through that process, again, that's why I say, to me. Again, that's why I say, to me, that would be something you do through direction to staff to bring a program back, not put it in the ordinance.
Right. Okay.
So I just wanted to say, too, that being able to tell the countywide committee that we have made this commitment and we're, you know, we're open to pooling our resources in order to offer these incentives in the future as we go forward, I think, you know, that will be helpful when we're leading the way.
And by pooling, I mean by taking advantage of the county's investment and using some of the county's money?
That's right.
That's, okay. That's where we'll start. I'm kidding, that was a joke, Steve. Okay, you have enough direction?
Yes.
So we'll be back talking about this in January, it looks like. Thank you again for, this is how it works, I'm afraid. And to be honest, this is faster than many ordinances that we end up adopting in a lot of cases. The item we're going to come up after the CAFRA conversation has been two-plus years in the works and we're not to the end yet either. So making big changes can take some time, but also can have big impacts. So thank you again for the work you've done, a little more patience, and it sounds like we're going to get there. So thank you all for that. We're going to conclude that item. Before we take a break, because I think we'll take a break after this presentation because we did get our consultant here to present our comprehensive annual financial report. Mr. Badawi is here to give that report. We're going to go right into that, and then we're going to probably take a very brief break and then get into the discussion about cannabis immediately following that. I'm not sure how long we're going to need for this, 15 minutes maybe? So we're going to move on to that item, move back to that item, item 8A, the presentation on the comprehensive annual financial report. Welcome.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, apologize for running late. Actually, I'm Mitesh Desai.
Sorry.
I'm a principal with the firm. Ahmed was supposed to initially present, but I took his place because my flight got canceled down south, so he sent me here instead.
So he's going to use your backup if you need any help.
Okay. So you should be seeing a presentation. So this is our presentation. We conducted the audit of the town's financial statements. We'll go, the agenda includes going over our engagement team, our deliverables, areas of primary emphasis, our auditor's report and the financial statements. We'll go over some required communications, that's our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, other required communications we're required to make as part of auditing standards. We'll briefly discuss new accounting standards and also allow some time for questions, if there are any. So going over our engagement team, so Ahmed Badawi was the engagement partner. I was in the role of being a manager, so supervising the team. Edward Posewski was the senior in charge, so he was supervising Jingy and, you know, working with town staff on the audit. We had access to IT specialist, Robert Witcher. We normally only bring him in for special projects or if you develop your own IT software, which we didn't need because you use a cloud-based system. And we had a quality control reviewer who reviews our work to make sure we followed auditing standards. They're kind of outside our initial engagement team. So deliverables, our independent auditor's report, these are three pages that are in the financial statements. That is our document. We also issue a report on internal control and compliance report that's at the back of the report, of the document. We issue a agreed-upon procedures on the appropriations limit, which is pretty much a set of procedures that were agreed on by California League of Cities and the AICPA. And also we'll be issuing a letter that is pretty much going over what we are going to discuss at this moment. Areas of prime emphasis, so we do look at all accounts and all aspects of the town's financial statements, but we focus on certain things more than others. It's part of a risk-based audit. So as part of an audit, we normally have to recognize revenues as a higher-risk area and adopt some procedures to address risk. We do this by looking at analytics, comparing non-financial data with financial information. So we look at trends in your water consumption, compare that to your billings. We confirm property taxes with the county. We compare your sales tax revenues to reports that are issued by the CDTFA. We also look at TOT revenues, which are very significant to the town. And other than that, we'll do budget to actuals and standard analytics. Pension and OPEB is still, is the third or fourth, actually, it's been, OPEB has been relatively new, but it's still a very complex requirement, so we do pay special attention to that. We review management's journal entries and compare information back to actual reports and audit reports. And management override of controls is another standard risk that we have to assume as part of the audit, not that anything came up that makes it more relevant to the town's audit than other audits. It's just that the town has internal controls in place and management puts those internal controls in place. In a sense, management can override them if they choose. So we look at accounting estimates, review them to see if they've changed for unnecessary reasons, management bias, for example. We look at journal entries to see why they're recorded and what are the internal controls that are over journal entries, and also if there were any unusual transactions. We look at the business rationale of those transactions, make sure they're appropriate and not random. Our auditor's report, those three pages, which is our document, is, was clean, a clean opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion. What that means is that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Accounting policies have been applied correctly. Estimates in the financials are reasonable, and all disclosures that we found to be necessary have been disclosed. One person, one board member in one of our presentations was not happy with the word "fairly presented" because she felt that we're giving the client an A- versus an A+. But this is our, this is the best we can say is that they're fairly stated. The reason why we say fairly stated is that we don't audit or look at 100% of the transactions. We audit on a sampling basis, on a risk-based basis. So there may be errors in the financial statements that were not discovered, but those errors, if any, should be immaterial to how the reader would review those financial statements. Just a few financial slides, nothing too significant. This is a trend of your assets and deferred outflows of resources. You'll see there was a spike in cash and investments, and this was mainly due to some clarification that came up regarding pensions, stabilization trusts that the town has. And it was pretty much of how you would treat those trusts, whether they're actually a fiduciary activity, which is outside the scope of the town, meaning that you're holding monies for a third party, versus is it the town's restricted asset or restricted monies for the town's benefit? And it was clarified that the direct beneficiary of those trusts is the town. The town is the one that makes the contributions for OPEB and pension. We do treat the OPEB one still as a trust fund, but for pension, because it's supplemental to its CalPERS, we consider that to be a restricted asset and adjusted the financials to show that. Indirectly does, of course, benefit the retirees and active members who are in the plan. This is a trend of your liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. So nothing significant here. Your long-term debt went down just as you're making payments on that. And we do have a subsequent event disclosure in the notes to the financial statements this year, which mentions that you made a prepayment as well later after the end of the fiscal year. You'll notice also that your net OPEB liability went down significantly, even though it doesn't look as great on the chart, but that was because of the large contribution you made during the year. This is a chart of your equity or your net position. Nothing significant here. And you'll notice the restricted net position went up, and that's because we're considering that pension stabilization trust as an asset this year on your financials, which increased your restricted net position, restricted for those contributions you need to make. This is a trend of your changes in net position for governmental activities and for business-type activities. Governmental activities is in yellow. There was a positive increase there mainly because of the additional sales tax, well, not sales tax, but additional measures that were passed, one for housing and then the other one for transportation. I think one of them is a county measure, which is the measure T or transportation agency measure. For business-type activities, there's a decrease mainly because of there was a large repair project during the year for the water, I guess, water lines, if I recall correctly. It was about $500,000 project that was completed during the year. In terms of net cost of service, so this is a comparison of your net cost of service, which is how much does it cost after revenue-producing activities or any revenues that are generated from your activities? For example, you may have citation revenues that offset the cost of your code enforcement. It's a good one to bring up. So that is the net cost versus what are your tax revenues? So comparing that, in reality, you should always have your tax revenues or not be close to or approximate or higher than your net cost of service. That's to show that you're, that's the reason why, I guess, residents pay taxes, is to cover that cost of service. Shouldn't be a great significant difference in that trend. The increase in tax revenues, I think, believe, is just that last year you did have some, one hotel that was closed and then also the effects of the fires on, I guess, occupancy and such. So you did have an increase in your tax revenues this year. And your net cost of service went down because you do have some additional grant revenues or those measures that are offsetting those, the cost that is to run those activities. Your expenditure coverage here for your general fund, this compares your available fund balance to your expenditures. So pretty much it gives you a number of months in the unlikely situation where you have no revenues coming in, how long can you operate for? The GFOA recommends around two to four months, so you have quite a healthy fund balance there in terms of 10 years, 10 months, which is six months more than what would be recommended. And this also includes monies that have been committed, assigned for other purposes. It just means unrestricted, meanings you can, if you decide, you can uncommit those and use it for something else, have you choose. It just wouldn't include restricted monies that are outside your control. As regards to appropriations limits, so we have a slide here for the GAN limit, just pretty much saying that you're under your GAN limit in terms of appropriations that were subject to the GAN limit for both the current year and the prior year. I know the town did adopt a new override this year for 2020, so that shouldn't be a problem any further. In terms of contributions, so the general trend is that contributions are, continue to go up as CalPERS increases your contribution requirements, as they de-risk their plan. We'll see how that goes as they decide to make some changes on their side in terms of what they want to invest in and see if that offsets the cost of our expectation of contributions to come in. This is a slide showing the trend of your proportionate share of your net pension liability. It's not necessarily the town's net pension liability exactly. It's an estimate based on a, I guess, a allocation factor that's come, that the plan auditor, the CalPERS auditor comes up with every year. So in terms of the net pension liability, and we saw this trend with many agencies, is that it stayed about the same across, everyone, it probably went down, actually, a lot of them, and that's because the share of the assets went up. Why the share of the assets went up versus why it was compared to prior is sometimes not easy to determine because there are other employers in the plan. So what other employers do one year to the next affects your share. So if we had a large contribution, for example, if one employer made a very large contribution in the plan, your allocation factor would become smaller compared to what it was in the prior year. So it's not really easily, it's not the best estimate, but it's the best that you can do as part of a cost-sharing plan. In terms of the notes of the financial statements, there are some other additional disclosures when it comes to pension. The sensitivity disclosure is the most significant. And this is just to show that, to demonstrate that the discount rate that's being used to calculate the net pension liability is very significant. Had the actuary used a 1% higher discount rate or lower discount rate, the number would be, could it be double or half of what it is currently? So it just gives you a range of what that number means and, you know, you're picking what's in the middle, which is your best estimate, and also what to expect in the future in terms of discount rates going up or down, what to expect. In terms of town's annual contributions, so this year, you did make that large contribution for OPEB. So this is not something that's necessarily in as a required element from CalPERS. This is up to your discretion how much you want to contribute and base space on your policy. You do get an actuarial report that kind of gives you a suggested amount of contribution every year, which I believe the town has contributed in equal to or in excess of every year. So that's, as a result, results in a lower net OPEB liability year after year, which just means that you would not need to contribute as much in the future as you would have had to, had you not made that contribution. This is a trend to demonstrate that. So you can see the plan assets went up significantly. Your actuarial liability went up slightly, but the overall effect is that your unfunded liability went down. Similarly to pension, there are some sensitive disclosures regarding the discount rate for OPEB. And this is to show, I guess, it is similar to pension. It's about doubles or half if the discount rate was 1% higher or lower. Sometimes it's not as big of a drastic change, just because the amount of premium that's being paid out is smaller than someone's annual pension. So sometimes you'll see that it's not a big range of, when it comes to OPEB versus pension, but it seems like the chart might also be a bit skewy because we're looking at, at it within a much more zoomed-in effect. And the additional sensitive disclosure here when it comes to OPEB is the healthcare cost trend rate. So the actuary makes an assumption as to how much healthcare costs will increase in the future. So had they used the 1% higher healthcare cost trend rate, you would have a higher liability versus what had they used the 1% lower. So it just gives you same, similar, just a range of what that liability could look like had they used something different. Going to the exciting slides here, just our responsibilities and required communications. So especially when it comes to us assisting management in preparing financial statements, which we're allowed to do with some safeguards in place, it can become a bit confusing as to whose document is that document that you're looking at, the CAFRA. And this is the town's document. This is management's document that they put together. We merely assisted in putting them together, putting it together. We obtained information from management, account rollups. We asked managers to review the financial statements before we issued them. The document that's ours is the opinion, and we are responsible to audit the financial statements, give an opinion as to whether they're fairly stated, evaluate internal controls, tone at the top, review the minutes, determine if there were any non-compliance, fraud, abuse, et cetera, that are required to be communicated to. Management is responsible for everything else. They're responsible for ensuring that they're in compliance with laws and regulations, developing internal controls, adjusting the financial statements for misstatements, making all information available to us, and also to take corrective action if we do disclose any findings, which we did not have any. Independence, so as part of providing an independent audit, is we have to maintain our independence and not to take on a role as management. So other than providing assistance with the financial statements, we didn't provide any additional service. The timing of the audit was performed as we discussed in the engagement letter to management. There were two new accounting pronouncements that were adopted this year, Statement 83 and 88. 83 is for asset retirement obligations, which are, have you a significant asset that you decide to abandon or close down that requires significant. you decide to abandon or close down that requires significant costs, monitoring, legal costs, capping, et cetera. You're, you would have to recognize a liability for that had you, when you decide to abandon it or close it down. I think nuclear treatment plant is a common example, the town doesn't have.
We don't have any.
And the one that maybe, may have been applicable but isn't is the sewer treatment plant. Had you decided to close that, there may be significant costs for cleanup and so forth. But that's only if you decide to, to close it down. Gatsby Statement 88 just requires some additional, different type of disclosures when it comes to direct placement debt or direct debts in general versus public offerings, which the town doesn't have except the loans, which are disclosed separately in any way. Estimates are, are part of the financial statements. So the most significant are pension and OPEB. Others are the useful life of capital assets, how long you expect to use a vehicle. For example, you would recognize expense over a period of that, of time where that vehicle is in use. So we review those estimates just to see if you're using those assets longer or, or shorter than, than what you're estimating. And you do have an allowance, very minor allowance for uncollectible accounts. Actually, the town doesn't have any allowance, but we do review the lack of an allowance when we're doing, reviewing receivables. Some of the disclosures, I mentioned the subsequent events. The other significant disclosures are significant accounting policies, cash investments, capital assets. Pension and OPEB are very thorough notes and provide a lot of information. We did have one restatement regarding the trust treatment for the pension stabilization trust. So that's disclosed in the prior period adjustment disclosure. We're happy to report, we didn't have any difficulties during the audit. We did have some minor adjusting entries that were all recorded by management. We didn't identify any risks or exposures that need to be disclosed or just required adjusting of the financial statements. And we had no disagreements in terms of accounting policies or, or implementation. And we didn't identify any material weaknesses that need to be disclosed. We obtained a representation letter from management where pretty much this is required as part of the audit, where management says that they gave us everything that we needed to be aware of, everything that they gave us was accurate. They also take responsibility of all the financial statements and the books in general. That's the purpose of that letter. We're not aware of any consultations that management may have done with third parties. This may be done sometimes when there's disagreement between the auditors and, and management. They may seek a third opinion to get some additional information. We're not aware of any consultations such as that. Other than the engagement letter and the representation letter, there were no other significant written communications that we made. There were no going concern issues. And also, we're not aware of any fraud or illegal acts that we need to make aware of you. Finally, here are the new accounting standards coming your way. I think fiduciary activities because will impact many agencies or all agencies. Pretty much some of the wording changes in terms of agency funds versus custodial funds, what's the definition of a trust fund. So that'll be reviewed as, as part of the audit. Majority equity interests, this talks about when you have a joint venture similar to some of the infrastructure that you have with the Veterans Home. So that may be something that we need to look at that. In 2021, the most significant accounting pronouncement you have is for leases. So this will affect how you treat any leases that you act as a lessor and also as a lessy. So if you do rent, it doesn't, it doesn't really impact any short-term leases. So only if you have any long-term leases where maybe you're renting some office space, extra office space, which I'm not aware of, but it might be something that would need to be looked at. And then 2022 is just conduit debt obligations where if the town, which we're not aware of, issued debt on behalf of a third party or for development, for example, or for landscape and lighting improvements, and the debt is fully guaranteed by future revenues, that the town is not obligated to make any payments in terms of when there is a default or when revenues are, are short. There are some disclosure requirements. There was just some inconsistency in the treatment of how those debts were recorded. Some agencies decided to record them as, as their own debt, even though they were not obligated to pay for it. So this just clarifies the treatment of conduit debt obligations, which shouldn't really impact the town. And with that, that concludes. Hopefully it was in 15 minutes. But if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think my email address or Ahmed's email address may be on the, the presentation if you do want to send him an email.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
No.
No. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
It's always good to hear clean audits.
Right.
Celia, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Fairly.
Okay. Thank you, Celia, also for
That's good.
making all this so clean and positive. And, and frankly, if we get excited about this, it's a really bad thing. If we want it to be very standard, and thank you for making sure that's the case.
Well done.
Appreciate it.
But you do want to invite everybody in the audience to participate with the budget process so they understand this even better?
That is true. So thank you. Appreciate it. I am gonna have us take about a five-minute, and I really mean five minutes. We've got a little transition. And we are back. So we are going to move on now to Item 10B, which is a proposed cannabis ordinance. So we will consider and discuss. We have Daniel and Sandra. I think, Daniel, are you taking the lead on this?
Actually, I'm
Oh, before that.
I'm giving you, you don't have a proposed ordinance. What you have before you tonight is a
Hold on, Daniel, for just a second.
Staff is looking and working with the cannabis committee. And the council, as the mayor has alluded to, has been having discussions on this, the potential discussion of dispensary and other related issues for quite considerable time. The objective tonight is to have a discussion about certain questions that will allow staff and the town attorney to work on developing a draft ordinance framework, should the council want to do that. So the range of questions that the planning staff will go over is needed for us to determine how to craft the proposed ordinance. Now, I want to be really careful when we say that. This is a working draft. So the idea is that if the council has an interest in moving forward, we will craft the proposal around the direction and feedback and consensus that we're hearing, recognizing that that draft is going to come back and have a very similar conversation, most likely, to what we just saw earlier with the leaf blower ban. What we have is the need for everybody to see the ordinance details in specificity. We've been talking in concepts, and this will finish up the discussion on a conceptual basis. And then it will allow both the council and the community to look at something and say, all right, what is this and does this work for Yountville or not? So with that, we have a number of questions, and then obviously, feedback and direction from the council and public comment.
So before we, sorry, Daniel, two things before we proceed. I'm going to, so we'll hear just very briefly kind of a high-level review of the discussion. Then I'm going to try to lead our, lead us through these questions and answers. With the vice mayor, we've been, the standing committee, Councilmember Durham, was for a period of time on that committee before I took over that position. So with that in mind, I'm going to provide some disclosures since we're finally at the point where the entire council is able to talk about this. We have a lot of faces that have not been here with the previous conversations about this. We haven't been able to discuss this as a council at all yet. It's been the ad hoc committee, now a standing committee, and individuals doing their own research. So it might feel a little bit cumbersome to get through this, but it's because we can only discuss this as a, as a body here in a public meeting. So with that, I just wanted to disclose, over the time I've been on the standing committee, as well as general research on my own part, I have met both Elliot Taylor, who's the operator of Harvest, which is, I still, I believe is still the only open cannabis retail business in the city of Napa, and Ryan Hill of Hill Family Estate, who took me on a tour of that facility to educate me on the operation that the city of Napa has permitted. That was a year ago, I think, something like that. I have also been approached and have had either phone or face-to-face meetings with members of the industry that have been asking about, are we going to create an ordinance? If so, do we know when? What might it look like? Those general questions. I suspect other members of the council have received those inquiries as well. I have reached out to have conversations with members of the Napa Valley Cannabis Association, as well as the California Cannabis Industry Association, again, to get kind of expert information and some information about Proposition 64, what it did say, what it didn't say. And there have been multiple League of California City and National League of City informational panels that I've participated in as recently as a couple of weeks ago at the NLC Conference in San Antonio, again, to educate and to hear where the industry is. So I wanted to offer, if any other members of the council had any disclosures about conversations that happened prior to this. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I also have some disclosures to make. While I was on the ad hoc committee, I was asked to take a meeting with one of the principals of Be Well Napa Valley, which is a spa. At that time, we were kind of dormant. So I said, we are dormant and nothing is happening. I just heard about her business concept. I also, since it, we became a standing committee on my own, I called and asked for a tour of Harvest. I toured with Bianca, the general man, the assistant manager there. Again, there was no discussion of anything pertinent to Yountville, just for me to see what a dispensary looked like. When I was on the two-by-six with the county, we did tour, we toured a dispensary, we toured a growing indoor grow, we toured a chocolate factory. I've also been to a dispensary tour with the, sponsored by the North Bay of the League of California Cities. And I have done a, quite a bit of research on my own, just to educate myself. And in full disclosure, I do have a, a call planned for December 9th with Chief Plumber of the Napa PD to do further looking into law enforcement issues.
Any other, Councilmember Durham?
So I, I started on the ad hoc committee at the time, I believe it was 2017 of March, moving forward, and went to numerous conventions and discussions concerning cannabis. That was for an educational level. I've also met with Elliot of Harvest. I've also met with the proprietor of Herbivore, who is Napa County-based as well. And all of my information has been educational.
Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Dornbecker?
I serve with the League of California Cities and have attended several workshops and, and providing information and did tour one dispensary with that group. But I haven't really had any in-depth conversations with any providers.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, any disclosures?
Well, one time when I was on vacation in Medina, I stopped. Dispensary, because I hadn't been in one.
Research.
Research, yeah. That's it.
Fair enough. Okay. Daniel, I think we're ready for you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Is this on? Yeah. Good evening, council. Happy holidays. Tonight, the topic of cannabis is being brought back to you for a structured discussion on if commercial sale of cannabis should be allowed in Yountville. And if so, what form of commercial sales would be most desirable for the town and what the best way to regulate these sales might be. Staff has developed a series of questions to help guide this conversation towards the issues that pose a real meaningful choice for the town. And these questions don't need to be answered tonight. I just want to stress that they, they just need to be discussed so that staff can have a sufficient direction to begin designing a draft cannabis ordinance if we are so directed tonight. Staff has also provided a series of maps to help refine the discussion on where cannabis sales could be allowed in town. These maps are based on input from the Standing Cannabis Committee as well as state regulations. And there are more on the table over there for the, for the public. For instance, state law provides that a cannabis dispensary cannot be located within a 600-foot radius of a school providing instruction to grades K through 12, a daycare center or a youth center. However, a local jurisdiction has the ability to reduce or increase the amount of separation based on local conditions. And if you look at your packet of maps, you'll see that we've used a 300-foot buffer instead of the 600-foot buffer. And this is because due to Yountville's size and unique geography, a 600-foot buffer would really be overly prohibitive to any potential cannabis businesses in town. Staff has also suggested a 300-foot exclusionary buffer zone around Yountville Elementary, Yountville Park, Yountville Community Church, and St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church. This is because these are facilities that cater to young children, families, or to a mix of age diverse groups. The Adventist Church is not included on this list because it's contained entirely within a residential zone where cannabis sales wouldn't be allowed regardless of the proximity to children-oriented facilities. And we've also not imposed a buffer exclusion zone around the community center as the center's programming is not geared predominantly towards children. The suggested 300-foot buffer zones thus allow for potential cannabis, commercial cannabis sales in most commercially zoned parts of town. In Old Town, with the exception of Chichio's and the Washington Square Parcel. In residential scaled commercial areas of town, with the exception of Edward James Courtyard, which falls within the Yountville Elementary Buffer Zone, and in both the primary commercial and public facility zoned areas of town. The council has the ability to modify these exclusion zones and also not just the zones, but how they're determined. So currently, if any part of a parcel falls within a buffer zone, then the entire parcel is excluded. Council could consider a different standard. For example, council could direct that only buildings and not whole parcels that fall within a buffer zone are excluded from cannabis sales. So for instance, the buffer zone that is around Yountville Park, it clips the edge of the Washington Square Development. If you were only going to include the buildings that it touches, that would only be Kelly's Gas Station. Otherwise, it would be the entire parcel if we're doing it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Besides location, the biggest choice for council is that, the other biggest choice for council is the type of commercial sales that should be allowed in town. The most standard option here is a simple dispensary, whether medical or adult use, like Harvest that a couple of you have mentioned. But cannabis businesses aren't limited to a dispensary model. Lounges that offer onsite consumption of cannabis have existed for quite a few years in San Francisco. And recently, West Hollywood permitted a restaurant to sell and pair cannabis with their food offerings, the first in the nation. And so that poses a question for us. Is this a use that would be appropriate for Yountville? And to that end, the town has a reputation for offering thoughtfully curated experiences. Would a cannabis restaurant enhance this reputation? What about a spa offering cannabis alongside its regular treatments? And it is worth noting here, however, that any establishment that sells cannabis cannot also sell alcohol. They must also verify that everyone entering the establishment is over 21 years of age, and they must maintain a secure, limited access area to store the cannabis. So there are a lot of interesting avenues we could travel down with this discussion, and each raises its own unique concerns, also opportunities. And we're happy to dive in and respond to any questions as they arise. But we're really hoping for council to drive this discussion and get into a good, meaty conversation on what type of cannabis future is right for Yountville. And so with that, I'd like to turn the issue over to council.
Okay. Thank you very much for that introduction. One quick clarification, if I could, one of your last comments about no alcohol sales or no alcohol consumption, the same business. But I think we just need to clarify, a business can have separate areas. You referenced the West Hollywood Restaurant. I believe there is a Believe there is a section of the restaurant that is alcohol-free, that can be cannabis, served by cannabis, and vice versa. They cannot co-mingle, though. Is that accurate?
It is my understanding that you cannot sell alcohol on the entire premise of the business. So I believe that the West Hollywood Restaurant does not sell alcohol at all.
And if we need to get, I think Councilmember Durham has something to say about this. I don't want to get too distracted yet, but if you have something to add to clarify that.
So the owner, if I own the building, I cannot have an ABC license and a cannabis license under my name. The Standard Hotel in West Hollywood is a hotel that has a bar and a restaurant with an ABC license. They can drop a retail space in there, run by a separate entity, and sell the cannabis.
So it's on the same property?
It could be on the same property.
Two different operators. Yeah. So maybe we don't need to get that far into it quite yet, and I'm considering a fine for any really bad puns as we go through this conversation. You all know them. We've all heard them too many times, because to be very candid, this is a serious conversation for us. To be really candid, doesn't mean that we take this any more or less seriously than any other conversation, but it does deserve the same kind of professional approach that we give everything else. So with that, fundamentally, again, we, the Vice Mayor and I gave a very basic summary presentation a couple of meetings ago of our work, and again, some of the past research from the previous ad hoc committee. When we did that, also, when I took over for Councilmember Durham on the committee, the question was, if we are not interested as a council in moving forward at all, then why have a committee going forward? We agreed that having a committee going forward and doing more research was appropriate. That was not an official, formal vote to craft an ordinance, but it was to continue the research and the dialogue, to get us to this point where we're actually having a conversation with the entire council. So one of the questions still remains, does the council support a cannabis retail business of any kind? And if yes, what kind? We don't have to worry about zones and all that stuff yet, so it's going to be a little tricky here, because we need to get some feedback from the council. We also want to get information from all of you that are here for this item, but I think the very fundamental question does need to be asked about, are we going to move forward? And if the majority of the council doesn't feel like going forward makes sense, then all of the rest of the questions are kind of moot. So with that, Vice Mayor, did you want to have any other kind of opening statement from our committee conversations, or should we just get to? Just get to, and I think, since we're not really formally voting on anything, we're getting direction for ourselves, is there consensus that we should continue to discuss crafting an ordinance? And head nods, yes, are acceptable, unless we need to have a discussion about it, so.
Yes.
Okay?
At this point, sure.
Okay. All right. So that was easy. Okay, we can all go home now. Now, see, I'm going to find myself for doing that. So what type of retail business are we interested in discussing? A dispensary is one type. As was mentioned, a wellness spa is another type. Lounge, we'll get to the fact that we need to talk about if yes to retail, then yes or no to onsite consumption of product. If yes to onsite consumption, is it a lounge, is it a restaurant experience, other things? I don't know how much of that detail we really need yet, Gary. Maybe guide me on how detailed we need to get at this point.
I don't think you need to go into a lot of detail on that distinction. We, if there is a desire to go forward with an ordinance like that, we can come back with that language.
Can we just settle on if, I think a dispensary is kind of the biggest question, I think, people have, and so we should identify whether we're interested in a dispensary, and if so, onsite consumption or not in that dispensary. Then we can maybe talk about other, and just leave the other undefined, for now at least.
Correct. And I think what I would also encourage you is, when we put the draft together, so you can start seeing it all comprehensively, then it may foster your thought process to go, "No, I don't want to do that," or "I want to add this, do that," but you'll have context with which to look at it.
Agreed. And I think we also have to recognize that as, this is going to be kind of fluid, that as we might say yes to something, then if the conversation is in these areas, that yes might become a no, if you don't think that that kind of use belongs in that kind of area. So we realize that this is going to be a little fluid, and nothing, I shouldn't say nothing, there won't be total finality tonight. There will be, we've already gotten guidance, which is, we should continue to pursue the conversation. How far we get and what detail remains to be seen. So with that, thoughts on, I would suggest we present basic thoughts on dispensary, onsite consumption, other retail, wellness uses, as a starting off point. Let's get everyone's opinion, and then if we want to hear from the public before we go into any further detail, maybe that's the way we go.
I have one question I'd really like to get.
About the structure that I'm trying to propose first.
Well, it does kind of go to that, because I'm very intrigued by the bullet point that's on top of page three, because almost all the other businesses we've ever really approved here have all been conditional use permits. So whatever, if we, you know, have a restaurant or something, it goes with the land. But I'm very intrigued in terms, and it relates to this discussion, that there are two new items here, so I'd like to have Gary comment on this regulatory permitting.
Okay, before we get into that, because we don't need to talk about regulatory permits if there's no consensus on having cannabis business at all. If there is, then I agree that we go to that step about the type of permitting that would be required. There's taxation conversation to be had, medical versus recreational, but I'd like to get a sense of, are we talking about a dispensary? Regardless of the type of permit, we'll get there, but I'd like to get that feedback first.
Well, I guess, where I'm kind of hung up, I'm thinking, okay, let's say, you know, somebody would be in favor of a dispensary, but not if they, it had to run with the land, because I just don't understand what the other two are. So it might affect which way I would think about it.
So when it comes to your time for a comment, then you could make that known, that if you support it, if it's this type of permit, don't support it if it's this type of permit. But I would like to get the fundamental question from the entire council, and if you'd like to start, then that's great. So why don't you start about whether you support a dispensary, and if yes, onsite consumption, and you could ask your question about permitting, how it might go with the land or not.
Yeah, okay. So that is kind of a question. If we, if, you know, we're, if I'm in favor of a dispensary, or a lounge, or some kind of thing, can you just give me some information about what these other types of permits are?
Yes.
So they, so the first clarity is, they won't run with the land.
Right. So that's a regulatory permit, which is, you're right, the zoning code doesn't have those currently. And you can think about these two approaches as regulation up front and regulation on the other side. A regulatory permit would have upfront requirements for operating, and they would be laid out in the ordinance, and would say, here's all the requirements, similar to like the ADU ordinance, right? It says, here's everything. This is what it requires, an ADU requires, period, and if it's met, you have an ADU. It's a similar kind of concept. Everything is upfront. That's a regulatory permit. Does not run with the land. Many cities and jurisdictions are issuing these for a year. Some of them are doing shorter than that. There's usually a regulatory permit fee that goes along with that. The upshot to that approach is that it doesn't run with the land, and so this is a program that can be reassessed as you go forward. You can also change that ordinance as you go forward and say, this isn't working, we want more of this, less of that. And when that new permit is issued on the annual basis, new standards would apply. Gives you a little more freedom going forward. The other option is to say, a certain use is allowed, subject to a use permit. Leave it at that. It's essentially one line in the zoning code. Someone who wants that comes in and applies for a use permit. You're all familiar with that process, and you can put the conditions in on a case-by-case basis. And so you wouldn't, you wouldn't be required to regulate each of these businesses identically. You could do it based on the specific facts of that case. Those are the two extremes. There's a hybrid that's in there that's less used, to be honest, but it's possible. You put some standards up front in your ordinance, and also require a use permit. There's a tricky balance between a permit that runs with land and the conditions that go with that, and what you might choose to regulate differently, and how those two would interact, given the law of use permits. But it is occasionally used in some jurisdictions, and it can give you some more hybrid flexibility there, but it's more common to see one or the other.
So let's say that I would favor a cannabis dispensary if we had, and I think it's the regulatory permitting scheme that provides the specific operation that you described. And with the thought that if you, if there were problems, and if you really found like, well, perhaps this is really a mistake, and we've tried it for a while, and we just don't want to do it again, would that type of permitting allow you to reverse it without it being permanent and running with the land?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what that would kind of give you, that option. Okay. So.
Before you get off of that, which is the most commonly used in other jurisdictions?
I'm seeing more regulatory permits for this type. I'm not quite sure what the city of Napa does for theirs. I think there was a moratorium for a period of time, which makes me think it was a regulatory permit, because a use permit can be denied when it comes up to the council, and so there wouldn't be the same need to do that. Regulatory permits, more common, but I think both are used. Both are common land-use tools, so both are used.
Okay. Yeah. Vice Mayor, and then back to Councilmember Mueller.
I just have a clarifying question on the regulatory permit. If a business comes in and ticks all the boxes of the regulatory permit, does council have discretion to say no?
It would depend on how the ordinance is written, and who issues the permit. And so a lot of the programs, the standards are set by the council through an ordinance, and it's staff that issues the permit, similar to a business license, similar to a cannabis delivery license, similar to those other programs that you've created up front that require annual permits to operate. And so it would be more typical to set the standards and then have that issued, if the standards are met by staff. Wouldn't have to be that way, but that's typically how the programs are set up.
I would add too, that is, what we're seeing as part of the regulatory permit, is that there's often a competitive application process for one or more limited number of the businesses, and there can be standards that businesses have to meet, and they rank higher than others. Another interesting point, I think, about the regulatory permit is, when it's approved, can be renewed annually, as the town attorney mentioned, but they're often not transferable to other entities, or other businesses, or to a change in ownership, and that coincides somewhat with the state laws, that the permits that they issue aren't transferable either.
They also, sorry, but they also can be, at our determination, renewed every 12 months, every eight months, whatever we choose, so we have more control over it as well. Is that not correct?
Correct.
And also, to further, to further explain, Director Liston, if we set up the application process properly, and then the screening process properly, we have two processes here, which then lead us into a regulatory permit, we, everything would, everything would already be led up to that point. Is that not correct?
I, yes, if I understand the question correctly, there would be a process to screen, so the person, so the applicant at the end would have already met all the requirements. If that's, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So under what argument have the businesses that have not been granted those permits been filing lawsuits against municipalities?
Well, often, often it's a fairness argument over the process, and how the selection goes. There can also be arguments over whether or not the ordinance itself complies with state law, Prop 64, whether or not you've met the requirements, or it might conflict with some of the licenses that are issued at the state level. But in any system that creates a limited number of winners in a market, is going to create an incentive to challenge it, and there's always some basis to do so, so.
Okay. So let's get back, Councilmember Mueller.
So, so they can't make a sequel argument?
It's always possible.
I think we've learned that anyone can make a sequel argument about anything.
All right. So that's, that's a yes. Okay. So it comes with its shortcomings. Okay. Well, that was very helpful, because I think it, you know, gives us more parameters, or toolboxes, tools in our toolbox to think about. I think my preference is to, you know, start slowly. I would definitely favor no more than one, see how it goes, and see where the, where it lands, and see what the demand is, and kind of generally go from there, rather than really, you know, throwing the doors wide open to multiples at this time. I think it's something that our community could probably easier, be easier to kind of get behind. I'm favoring one, because that's how our community voted, and I take that everybody. I think that the vote was almost 58, 59% in favor of it. So that's where my opinion is coming from, is how the community voted. Granted, that means that 42% said no, but nonetheless, that's how the majority went. So that's my feeling at this time. One, it seems to make sense that a dispensary would, you know, be the first thing to try, both recreational and medical.
So when you talk about one, you're talking about one cannabis dispensary permit, that doesn't preclude another business that is not a dispensary?
My opinion to start is one, and my opinion that it would be a dispensary.
So no wellness spa, no restaurant that has?
Not to start. Now, six months later, am I open for that other discussion? I mean, I don't know if it kind of goes back to a bit like leaf blow, is it six months or a year enough to see how all that goes? And, you know, I think a lot of times, I do know that there are people very opposed to this. My thought with by having one to start is that sometimes you find out that, you know, you think the sky is going to fall, and it really didn't, that this maybe really wasn't so bad, and you might be open to more. I remember at one time, I certainly wasn't open to 14 wine tasting rooms, and now it's really, it's not something I give much thought to. So it's a bit of, I think the genie's out of the bottle with Prop 64, and I think it's about time we, you know, put one thing in place, at least, because that's how the majority of the people in Yountville voted, and so that's what I will also support. But again, much like our last discussion, I like starting with one, giving it some time, working out the best way, and see, see how it goes, and expand from there, if needed. So is that kind of answer your question?
Okay. Yeah, and we'll, we'll limit, we'll limit the conversation to dispensary right now. Onsite consumption, are you in favor or not in favor of onsite, assuming?
I really don't have an opinion right now, but I would, I would say, unless I, you know, hear something later, that probably the answer would be no. Because it's not really in my wheelhouse of saying, let's start low and go Because it's not really in my wheelhouse of saying, let's start low and go slow and see where we go.
Okay, so um, the other thing about a dispensary would be medical only or medical and recreational products? Both? Okay, again, we're just trying to get kinda like a baseline here to figure out where we're headed. Uh, Councilmember Doran Becker?
I think based on the size of our town, one makes sense at first, at least. I was confused thinking that a dispensary meant medical in my mind and retail is something else. But if, if they're all, if it's called a dispensary, no matter which, so that, that settles that for, for me. I think I pretty much agree with what uh, Councilmember Mueller said, that we start slow, check, you know, check in and, you know, have a test run with one dispensary. And I don't know about um, I don't know about allowing um, consumption, I, I can't say.
Okay, and do you have an opinion about the type of permit a dispensary would have then? The regulatory permit or the more kind of traditional for our non-cannabis businesses would be a conditional use permit? Or a hybrid of those?
I think probably there's a hybrid to be had out of the, the combination of the, you know, regular and, and the regulatory. Because this is, well, this is something new for the town, I, I really can't answer that at this moment, really.
That's fine, Councilmember Durham?
I think a um, retail cannabis shop, which would be a type ten. Which I think we need to all be aware, based on some of the other questions. A type ten li- retail cannabis shop allows for delivery. It's attached to that type ten retail um, permit. So if we allow a type ten, which is a retail um, cannabis shop in Yountville. We're also allowing that retail business, the storefront business to do delivery. Um, which in my opinion makes sense, if we are allowing one in here. Then, the opportunities with retail and the opportunities with the possible excise tax. I would prefer the deliveries be coming from in Yountville than from Lake County where they currently are. My, my thought, I, can I back up one second? I know some, some people left the audience, um, I, I wanna back up for a second, real quick. I, I wanna explain that um, I, I touched on it earlier. I've been, I was on the ad hoc committee in, in, for over three years, or close to three years, excuse me. I've been researching this for over three years. I've read ordinances, I have read uh, regulatory permits, I've read use permits from Pasadena, Mount Chasta, Malibu. Pacifica, Cloverdale, Cattati, Davis, Sebastopol, Santa Barbara, Napa, Ojai, Fairfax, Grover Beach. West Hollywood, San Luis Obispo, Palm Springs, Santa Rosa, Carpinteria. And then also as a resource, um, the League of California Cities. I've also spent more time than I ever thought I would, as a nod to Councilmember Mueller here, on the NIH web, website. On the CDC website and on the Psychology Today website, researching cannabis. This is not a decision that I'm making at this point with no consideration from anybody else involved. It's been a lot of research and a lot of time, so I just wanted to lay that groundwork uh, down there as we move forward. I think the town could consider, ba- based on, based on what's going on in the community right now. Based on our economic vitality, based on our mix of business, based on maybe some businesses that locals would see. I see an opportunity if we do a type ten retail. And also possibly a second site that is edibles only. That would create some sort of diversity within the cannabis sales. Would allow for more foot traffic, would allow for a um, diversity in this community that we've talked about. And I wanna be clear, I'm not, I'm not giving a priority to any business. W- we have the ability to set the parameters, the zoning, the program that we wanna do for a business. And we're treating this as we would any other business that's coming into this community. We're determining a use permit, a regulatory permit and the parameters that we do. So by doing that, I believe that we're um, possibly promoting the rest of the um, businesses as well. Does it create foot traffic to allow for more, dare I say, local serving businesses? Or will we see other businesses come in as a result of this? Um, one other clarification I wanna make and the planning director can correct me if I'm wrong. We don't, we have not set a moratorium nor restricted any businesses in this community, is that correct?
We have a ordinance that prohibits cannabis activity outside of the items that are allowed, like growing six plants within one's residence. And the delivery, so yes.
And any other type of, any other type of business?
It's not permitted.
No, 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 I apologize, any, any, so, uh, I, I want-
Tattoo parlors, things like that.
Yeah, I want the, I want the community to realize, we're not doing this at the expense of a pharmacy, at the expense, at the expense of a bookstore. Those are all welcome to come in and we've set the guidelines for those businesses to come in.
Yes, including with incentives for some types of businesses that we don't have.
Very good, so I just wanna emphasize that fact that we're not, we're not, we're not allo- not allowing any business to come in because we're having this discussion.
To add to that, uh, just very quickly, we do limit based on zones, what types of businesses can uh, open. There are some grandfathered uses on the east side of Washington, for example, that would not be permitted under current conditions. But they're grandfathered in, there are things like full restaurant or other industrial type uses. No prohibitions as you identified, but some limitations, based on location.
Definitely, so with that being said, um, two types, uh, a type ten retail storefront and an edibles only. I, I think we need to, I don't think, my position is we need to have a discussion about onsite consumption. If we're gonna sell it and we have all these hotel rooms, are we just allowing, are we just saying the hotels are gonna have to deal with it? As they see fit with any smoker? Um, I think that we could have a discussion about a possible onsite consumption. Um, that would um, maybe make it uh, make it work with the business, with the other business communities that we have here. So people aren't smoking in the parks, so the cops aren't chasing them down smoking on the street or what have you. So I think that's a discussion that we can have. In terms of the regulatory permit, I think we can do, I think we should do a regulatory permit. But I think it should be tied with a use permit because that allows us the ability to have a little bit more say in it. And I say a use permit because of the fact that a use permit can be tied to having a California's license for cannabis. So therefore, they will have to have that. That cannabis license does not go to the next person. So the next person who possibly had that place would have to have that, so it wouldn't necessarily travel with the uh, real estate. So I think there can be a good hybrid of that as well.
Thank you, to that point, and this might be a Gary question. There has been legislation that has been pushing for, I believe it's really based on an equity issue, that businesses could be prioritized if an applicant has been involved in cannabis activity previously when it was prohibited in California, but is now legal, is that accurate?
I'm sorry, repeat that one more time.
I, I wanna say that there, there has been a, an effort to uh, provide, I don't wanna say it wrong, a priority. If, if somebody was involved in cannabis activity prior to the, the legalization by Prop sixty-four. That there has been some effort to uh, give that applicant a priority in that um, permitting process, is that accurate?
Yes, some local jurisdictions have done that, in fact.
Is that a local discretion?
Currently, yes, that's, you can put that within the ordinance itself on priority and how those applications are scored and how priority is given. Um, I understand the state's considering a similar thing, but the locals really took the lead on that and now the state's considering the same thing.
Typically, when the equity issue is addressed, it is to deal with what had been the illegal or the medical only that were operating within the community, so that they had a chance to legitimize themselves within that community.
But it's not, it's not a state mandate at this point?
And obviously, we don't have a situation with any legal or illegal medical only operating at this point.
That we're aware of.
And yeah, and I just wanna provide uh, one um, addition to Councilmember Durham's comment on the hybrid system, just for clarification. And I don't wanna get hung, hung up too much on terms here. A hybrid between a use permit and a regulatory permit, and I wasn't here for all the previous conversations. There is a way to do a regulatory permit that also allows conditions to be added on a case by case basis. I think that's probably what we're having the discussion about, issuing both would create, um, could create some issues. And so, there's still a way to have some control outside of the ordinance that allows some case by case conditions to go in there. Um, so I think that's what the hybrid system is.
So, so in previous conversations, what I've been hearing is, and also from tonight, is the regulatory permit has been preferred because it doesn't run with the land with no authority whatsoever going forward. That's kind of the fundamental benefit, I think, that I've heard people are preferring. Councilmember Durham, is that with the conditions that can be added under our local authority, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Like a regulatory plus?
And plus, the regulatory um, is only viable if you have that California state cannabis license as well. From the BCC, so you tie all those things in together, so it works out well.
Okay, and I think you covered, um, we do have to have a conversation, assuming we get through the dispensary consumption, what does it mean? If it's smoking, if it's edibles, uh, or all of the above, uh, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, um. I've been all over the board on this. And to me, it, it kinda comes down to two things. We want to maintain local control as much as we can and not get a pushdown from the state level. And we wanna do what is best for Yountville. Our population did vote a majority in favor of legalization. When Councilmember Durham and I were on the ad hoc committee, however, there was a pretty strong vote for no dispensary. Now, since then, I have learned a lot myself about what is a dispensary, what isn't a dispensary, what else is available. I'm not really comfortable supporting at this time, as our first foray into a cannabis business, what I call a classic dispensary. Maybe a spa, maybe, and, and this is where I need to continue education. Some of the uh, in San Francisco, I think um, as our planning department said, for a number of years, there have been lounges with onsite consumption. What I can't figure out from their websites is whether they're a dispensary with stools and sofas and you can also carry it out, or whether you can only consume it onsite so that it's truly a lounge. Same with the restaurant in West Hollywood, I read conflicting reports, some people said, what you order there, you have to intake there and you can't take it with you. Someone else wrote, that's ridiculous, I took a six pack of blunts, whatever that may be, out with me. So, you know, I, I just need more education. But at this point, I'm not ready to say yes to a typical dispensary. If I were pushed into a corner, I would probably be more likely to say yes to a medical dispensary. Because I am more interested in it, what I've heard from our residents is it typically is more medical than recreational. And I also would say, anything that I would wanna say yes to or be more willing to say yes to, would be a unique business. Because I think that's what makes Yountville, is there are gonna be dispensaries in Napa Valley. I mean, there already are. What I would be looking for is some sort of a unique service or activity that would cater to both our residents, because I have heard from sufficient residents who might use something like a spa, for example. That would also help us, and I, I know this is a wild word to use, but would help us diversify our businesses. Because it's legal and that's why I go around with it. I was raised where, don't do it, it's awful, it's horrible, but you know what? I'm sixty-five years old now and things have changed and it's legal. So, that's why I'm willing to dip my toe in the water, but I do listen, that a big percentage said not a classic dispensary. And I would look for the hybrid, what we're calling the hybrid. I would favor starting probably with one, knowing that we can always do more. Uh, onsite consumption, as I say, I'm, I'm likely open to it if I can understand it and what it really means.
Thank you, um, and I will start out by uh, similarly to the Vice Mayor, talking about um, having to educate myself, having grown up with a very law enforcement centric family with an older brother who was a cop in Oakland and my dad was a lawyer. And that was the same story, which is, it's illegal, so you don't do it. And times have changed, absolutely. So, as I have learned uh, what this all means, I also respect the fact that I don't see my role as a decision maker on this dais, as a, to dictate lifestyle. We can regulate certain things to um, try our best for public safety, for um, economic success and vitality. All of those things, uh, but for me to dictate what you can and can't do that is legal, uh, I don't think that's my role. So I, I say yes to allowing a, we will call it a dispenser, even though I know retail shop and whatever the industry is now trying to call it, because of the confusion of dispensary, medical versus recreational. I support that idea, um, I think it is showing um, kind of a progressive, innovative um, perspective. That's something that I think Yountville has embraced over the years, is being willing to um, be out front of some ideas. This isn't even totally out front, but it is for Napa County uh, to a degree. I, I would support onsite consumption, again, because that does create a unique opportunity. To your point, Vice Mayor, that um, to my knowledge, there is not an onsite consumption opportunity yet in Napa County. If I understand it, and we'll be hearing from um, the representative from Harvest, I'm sure, tonight. Uh, well, I'm not sure, but maybe, uh, if I misrepresent it, that uh, there is not uh, onsite consumption allowed, uh, medical only. There are other permits in the process, varying levels of uh, completion in Napa City of, um, that might have other conditions. But I do think this allows us an opportunity to be a little bit distinct and different um, in this offering. Never consumed the product myself, so um, I don't get the nuances of uh, topicals versus edible versus smoking. And what they uh, mean to someone who is more of an aficionado. Uh, but uh, again, I believe that we should set the public up to make those decisions. To do things that are legal and appropriate while having restrictions on how you behave before, during and after. I see this very similar to a wine tasting uh, business. We have embraced wine tasting rooms, we have had uh, very limited uh, negative consequences. Because if the business doesn't regulate its patrons and the consumption of alcohol, they lose their business. Uh, and that's too high a price to pay. There's onsite consumption of alcohol, I see this as a very similar situation. So um, I would, uh, there's kinda bits and pieces of everything I've heard. I would be open to uh, one classic dispensary permit with the addition, you know, the regulatory permit, I think, Gary, you've described is probably the most um, common, which also to me, with that legal mind going, it's also the most legally defensible potentially. But with some additional conditions that we can uh, apply locally to make sure that this is a good fit for Yountville, not just a, a templated fit for any other jurisdiction. I would be open to a second permit of non- I would be open to a second permit of non-dispensory, a non-dispensory permit. I don't even want to try to define that, because I think the creativity of, of the public can define that. It could be a restaurant, it could be spa, it could be something we haven't heard of or thought of yet. Clothing, I know that's more of a hemp thing, but I would be open to a second non-classic dispensary permit. We will probably run out of locations that this is going to be permissible for the council. Before we get to how many the ultimate number should be, I'm sensing that we're going to head that direction to talk about zoning and mapping. You're going to find out that the Vice Mayor and I were reasonably limited in what we were even going to recommend that the council consider for that very reason. And so we have three zones that we are considering to have a dispensary, because we really weren't defining the type of use. We were just saying, if it's going to be cannabis related only in these areas, kind of into discussion, within those areas, more discussion. So regulatory permit with local conditions applicable, onsite consumption of, at a dispensary. And I will lead off the smoking versus non-smoking consumption. There would need to be, I think, Councilmember Durham, to your point, if you sell something that's going to be smoked, we really have an obligation to allow there to be a space to do that. And we've already said no to our public spaces, our parks, and that type of thing. So I would be open to consumption onsite, both smoking and non-smoking, with whatever necessary venting and odor controls can and should be in place, because we don't want this just venting out of a business and impacting negatively the surrounding parcels and businesses. So I think maybe very quickly, we can ask consumption, if there's support for onsite consumption or not, and if so, smoking, non-smoking. And then I'd like to get audience participation going after that, because we may get even more information we can use for some of the other questions we're going to answer. So just to the point of onsite consumption, is there support? And if there is, what type of consumption?
Whatever, whatever is sold at the retail store.
Basically, open, open consumption.
Would be able to be consumed on property.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Norman Becker?
I'm not, I'm not sure. So I'm still thinking.
All right. No final decisions here, this is guidance only. Councilmember Mueller?
I'm also would really have to think more about what we end up having in terms of consumption onsite. I'm very mixed about smoking. We can't legally smoke anyplace here, so how can then we allow this?
It's allowed in private property. We allow, we allow cigars to be sold in certain places.
I guess we do have a place over, yeah, that's right, behind bovine that we, that cigar bar. Is that operation, I've never been in there, quite frankly.
And if a business allows, is permitted by state law to have smoking, I mean, there are cigar bars in Napa.
That's true, okay.
We have at least one business in town that has grandfathered in for smoking. We all know that. Of course, of course, this will have to comply. This will have to comply with state.
Right.
Law, and also our local jurisdiction. So that, that doesn't go away.
Right. So I guess I, you know, really don't know enough about, quite frankly, a dispenser, exactly what products they have or they don't have, or they can have anything they want to have. So I really, I think it's a level of detail I can discuss later, probably. I know it's, everyone would like something now, but what do they really sell? What, what do you have in there? What, what is, you know, what do you, are the things that you take away or that you actually consume right there? I'm, I'm just not familiar enough, but.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I wasn't in the one in Menasino very long, so.
And I've never even been to Menasino, so, you know. I'm still out on whether or not I would be in favor of onsite consumption. I, I can't say tonight. But I do want to make clear, I don't think I said this, I would be in favor of permitting only one business in town.
Regardless of the type of business? Okay, so I'm, I'm not keeping tally, I knew you would be.
Can I make one, I apologize, one clarification. Two points. One, just to the Vice Mayor's point, actually, two points. The online survey was done in 28, March of 2018, and it was really interesting. There were 135 comments on that survey. And I think those comments are just as telling as the strict percentage numbers of yes or no, and I agree or I don't agree. So I think if we move forward with this, education is a huge component of this whole discussion. Education, everybody has a fear of the unknown, and may possibly a fear of what we've been told for so long, and now everything's changed all of a sudden, and we're told it's all right. And it's like, wait, whoa, I don't understand this. So I think the education component is, needs to be part of the application process, as well as part of the screening process for any cannabis business that would come into Yountville. Both for the people walking in to the retail shop, or whatever it may be, as well as an education component for the community members. I think that's very vital. And I think that speaks to when the survey was done and part of the discussion we're having now. Secondly, to speak to the Vice Mayor's comment that we want to create a unique business, I agree completely. This is Yountville. Nothing else is like Yountville. We have a certain aesthetic here. Just look at the rates for a room tonight, and you'll get clear on what the aesthetic of Yountville is. So therefore, we do want to create a unique business, and that's going to be made for our community, as well as for those coming into our community. With that being said, I think we need to make sure that distribution is part of the type 10 retail. Most of the research that I've done, if we're going to be able to make a unique business and a unique opportunity here, then these businesses need to be able to sell to themselves. And the law is currently set up as such that they cannot, unless they're a distributor. So we need to have that discussion moving forward as well. If someone is making their own product, it's very difficult for them to turn around and then sell it in their own retail shop. So we need to have that discussion moving forward as well as, because I don't, we shouldn't have commercial, in my opinion, we shouldn't have commercial cultivation, no manufacturing, no lab testing facility. And then we could have distribution when it is tied into that retail shop. I just wanted to clear that, clarify that for the ordinance discussion.
Okay, you're jumping ahead a little bit there, but that's all right. So I think we have some clarity. Steve, why don't you recap what you've heard, and then I'm going to open it up for public comment. Your microphone, please? You can go away for a week and you forget the mic.
The consensus direction is to support an adult recreational dispensary, what we're calling the regulatory hybrids approach, so it'll have a regulatory framework. And then you're close on onsite consumption. So I think what staff would probably do is draft some onsite consumption language, and then the council can either keep it in or remove it at that point in time. And at this point, you're looking at one, one cannabis retail entity.
One, what we're calling a dispensary.
Right. That's the consensus, and then there's a few other.
Yeah, the, the additional permitting is still up for discussion, but there's not a majority yet on that.
Correct, this gives us a good framework to start with.
And the type 10 that allows delivery is an option that's, you know, Councilmember Durham has mentioned, that gets a little bit more into the subcategories, I think.
Correct, and it may be something that we can give you options on that. I will point out that as Councilmember Durham moved ahead, part of the quick question was, did you want to reconsider anything we've already not? I do want to remind everybody that we currently do allow delivery of cannabis. We have one and a pending application for a second dispensary. So it wouldn't necessarily be unreasonable to allow, if you were to allow a cannabis resale, for it to deliver locally within the community.
Okay, thank you. So Sandra, did you have anything you wanted to add, or Daniel, before I invite public comment?
No, I think we're clear on the direction.
Okay. Okay, so whether it's something that we've already covered, or if it's something you would like to share with the council or ask questions, feel free to do that. There's more to talk about, obviously, but I feel like we've gotten through kind of that baseline I was referencing, and now we can have your input that helps guide us going forward. So for those of you who are not familiar, we do limit to three minutes per person in order for everyone to have a chance to speak. We have the timer up on the screen, so if you could respect that time for everyone else in the room, much appreciated. So would anyone like to address the council? Or leave? Somebody? Okay, Whitney?
Okay, Whitney Diver McAvoy, Yountville Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I just want to thank the council for a very, I thought, thoughtful and well-guided discussion. We are correct, this has been a, a long conversation, and I think that's what we're good at sometimes, is really talking it through. And I think that enables us to make some really smart decisions. So I want to offer some thoughts for consideration, and I think a couple of you hit it, hit it on the head. Part of our job that we do together, that you contract with the chamber for, is to sell our destination. And something you've heard me say over and over again is to find a point of difference for us. And that point of difference is unique businesses, and a diverse business community that enables us to have an economic vitality, that enables us to sustain the quality of life and enhance the quality of life that we cherish here in town. So that economic vitality comes with that unique business and that diversification. So if we're going to move forward with a one permit location, I highly, highly suggest that we find the most unique experience possible. The mayor mentioned it already, we already have dispensaries in Napa County. That's not a point of difference for us. Our tasting rooms are a point of difference. People aren't doing that in other cities in Napa County. So I would just really urge for us to think about that and not try to fit into a box. But it sounds like we're already trending in that direction. I also think it's very important, and the Vice Mayor mentioned this, that we get ahead of state regulations. We don't want to be burdened by what is coming down from the state. We already know that's on its way. So let's get ahead of that. And then lastly, Jeff mentioned, you know, we don't have a prohibition on any other type of businesses here in town. And I also think that's something that is really important to make note of. And I think we all kind of heard that loud and clear. So thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, everybody, city council, mayor. I am Billy Summers, I'm the owner of The Herbivore. I'm a Napa Valley resident. I'm a father, I'm an ex-parks commissioner from St. Helena, business owner in Napa, and I care about what happens in the valley. I'm a fabric of the community, and I think it's really important, the way that Yountville chooses to engage with cannabis. Obviously, it's here, it's emerging, it's moving rapidly, it's in its infancy as an industry. And I think as a culture, it's very juvenile, but there is a great amount of misunderstanding around this plant because of sort of the dark market where it lived before. And like you all said, now that it's legal, things are a little different. And there's an amazing healing potential and a medical side to this plant that has been prohibited for 80 years or more. And now, as we approach it, we know that it helps with seizures, and it helps with anxiety. And it's getting, I have story after story of people coming to me saying, my grandpa's not taking opioids anymore, and this is helping with, you know, this other person in my family. And I mean, I, I can't believe how many people are, you know, telling me this, you know, as I go forward. And as I see, you know, in this valley, we are the epicenter of food and wine. We lead the world, the, the nation in food and wine sophistication, how to approach it. It's not Bourbon Street, this is Napa Valley. You know, we have 100 people playing bocce, and everything's fine the next day. We don't see anything that we don't want to see the next day. And I think that, you know, Yountville is the epicenter of the epicenter. And the way that you lead, look at French laundry. You know, I prefer to see French laundry in this valley as an offering, rather than something of a franchise or a fast food aesthetic. I think the unique offerings that we have in the valley are incredibly important. And I think taking that level of education and sophistication with that farm-to-table essence of Napa Valley in a cannabis style and space is critical for our valley and the way that we're perceived, and the, the way we approach it. So I think as you step forward, it's, it's dangerous if the wrong decision's made, but if the right decision's made, it's an amazing opportunity to not only lead our state, but lead the world perhaps, because of the base of where we're at. We are, you know, the most, the epicenter of food and wine, you know, two of the biggest consumables in the world, and now we have cannabis coming as another consumable. So I just want to say thanks for your time and for everybody listening, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes?
Hi, my name is Hildy Swakis, and I live in Oak Circle. And I wasn't going to talk, I don't have any notes or anything like that, but I am shocked at what I'm hearing. It makes no sense to me at all. I'm not a prude, I'm not square, I've been around the block many times, so I know what life is all about. But it reminds me very much of when we all started smoking cigarettes. It was a thing to do, everybody did it, probably all of you did it at some point or another. And look what happened, okay? People are dying left and right. Look what's happening to the, to the kids with the vaping right now. There is no studies done, and they're, they're dying, okay? I mean, I could go on and on and on. This is, this is in the, in the baby stage marijuana. We don't know enough about it yet, you know? So everybody, it seems like you've all made up your mind already. I came here tonight to see what the discussion was going to be. There was no discussion. Basically, you've all made up your mind that this is what's going to happen, and it's going to happen in the retail way. I would prefer, if anything, I do believe in medical marijuana. I do believe in maybe having a spa somewhere, you know, if, if that's the road we're going to go down. But this idea of retail and on the main street, you know, what have we come to? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's not enhancing Yountville. It's, it's really putting a dark spot on this town. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Hello, I'm Megan Mason, Five Heritage Court. This is an emotional topic for me too, and I, I concur with Hildy. I, I'm at a loss for words, because I thought this was going to be more of a discussion as well, and you have come to, you've already been counting how many dispensaries you're going to have. I live here 32 years, and every time I get up to this microphone, I say how much I love this town. I raised my family here, we had a business here. If this, if this happens, this is, this is, I've lost my love, I really have. I, I, you're putting a beautiful town that has been worked hard for claiming food and wine, beauty, agriculture, viticulture, and now we're going to be a West Hollywood? Go to West Hollywood, if that's what you want, to have your, your tourists. I, I just, I, I thought we had the vote that said 66% of the people didn't want dispensary type of business, and now the numbers seem to be changing. I, it's, it's really heartbreaking to me, and I'm quite disappointed in this council, if this is the path. is the path that you're going to take. Thank you.
And also, let's just be clear, we haven't agreed to go any direction yet. This is the first time we, as a council, have been able to even talk about this. So we're talking about what is even being considered. It doesn't mean that this is a final vote, just to clarify.
Mayor Dunbar, city council, thank you for your time. My name is Joel Bridingham, I live on 6920 Yount Street. I use cannabis on a daily basis for relief of chronic pain, stress, and to get a full night's sleep. I am not here to say yes or no to establishing a dispensary in that term we can, is just a term at this point in time, in Yountville. I currently go to Vallejo and Sebastopol to purchase cannabis tinctures, creams, and edibles. Delivery services are available to Yountville. I would use a local dispensary if it carried the products I use, sold quality brands, and had fair pricing. My concern is if a dispensary were to be established here in town, it might hike the prices to reflect the expensive Yountville culture. I think it's ironic that people are concerned about the perceived negative elements of a cannabis business here in town, when we actively promote the excess of wine consumption. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Okay.
Hi, Janet Claire Gottsch, Vista Drive. In Yountville, we have to go to Napa for anything we need, pretty much. And we have the opportunity to have these products delivered to Yountville, and so I'd hate to see a dispensary here in town. And if it was something like Vice Mayor Dorman said, where it's a spa sort of a facility, then I think that that makes sense. But I really hate to see this happen, too, and I agree with what Megan has said. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Anyone? Anyone?
Mayor, vice mayor, city council, my name's Elliot Taylor, Harvest of Napa. I really appreciate all of you, appreciate staying late here, and appreciate the community coming out. I live here in Napa Valley. I think it's really beautiful to live in a place like America where we can share all of our different beliefs and our opinions, and also coexist while having those differing opinions. I think the state of California reviewed this and voted on it in a majority, and I think locally it was voted on as well. I appreciate all the opinions on this, and I look forward and support any decision that the council and the community decides to go with. And I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have after this meeting or so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Anyone? Okay. Seeing no other public comment right now, we can have additional conversation about some of the questions that are posed in this staff report. We have discussed if a dispensary, what type of permit. There is still kind of undetermined if a permit about onsite consumption. Let's, let me ask this question, since it's also come up in public comment. A non, what I would call a classic dispensary, is there interest in that type of a permit? I get the sense that there is, but I'm trying to get clarity on if the council supports a non-classic dispensary use. Again, trying to avoid what that means, because there could be a lot of creative business options. Councilmember Durham Becker?
Well, I think, you know, if we're looking for, as Whitney said, something very special for Yountville, I agree with Vice Mayor that, you know, something like a spa would work, but the very word dispensary is sort of off-putting to me, I got to say.
I think that's why the industry is referring to retail shops or some other, there is a connotation that it's medical-only, and it's kind of an old term, but...
Also, I do agree that we could drive, we drive into Napa for so many things. You know, I do all my food shopping there, so I have no problem with the 10-minute drive into Napa, and we do allow delivery, so no, I've not made up my mind. I've, I wanted to hear what everyone had to say, but if we did say yes to something, it would have to be more like a spa. I don't like the idea of just a dispensary.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham? Specific to the non-dispensory use?
I'm fine with it not at the expense of a type 10 retail.
But potentially in addition to...
Not in place, in, in, yes, thank you.
I think there is agreement, I'm going to speak for yourself, go ahead, about a non-dispensory use.
Well, I think I'm going to just say, it's a bit complicated. I firmly want to start with only one, and I'm not going to say it has to be a strict dispensary, we don't even have that definition, it could be out of date for all I know, but, or just a spa. I mean, if a business wants to come in and, you know, I'm open-minded, I don't really, I'm not going to promise anybody which way I'm going to vote until I really see what it really looks like, but if they had one area where it was a dispensary, and then another area where they sold like lotions and potions for a spa and a sponge or something, you know, and maybe, you know, there's some discussion about a lounge, and it was all in one business, you know, it's, it's not clear-cut dispensary only, but, you know, I, I'm open to a new model.
One business, one permit, is what you're...
Right, right. But, so I'm not saying that, but I think it really needs to have that ability to, you know, if we're going to, you know, do it, sell what people voted for, that they want, it was, you know, be able to purchase, I believe, you know, the medical stuff, that was approved in 1995, but the most recent one is recreational.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, it could, again, pure hypothetical, you could have somewhere where you could purchase cannabis products and also potentially have service like spa treatment?
Well, it's just like, you know, JCB, and if you go in there, it really looks like a clothing store, but if you kind of go to the far north end, you know, there are, you know, plenty of lotions and a spa chair even upstairs. So that's a creative use of, so what do you call that? Do you call that clothing retail, or is that a spa? I mean, it has multiple elements, so I think that's, I'm open to that, but just going someplace where you can just buy shampoo, and, you know, our voters, you know, said yes to recreational, then I'm willing to, especially with a conditional permit, that if things don't work out, you know, we could pull the plug, see what happens. So...
Okay.
I guess that's a hybrid.
Hybrid business, yes. Vice Mayor?
I think I am the most open to a non-classic dispensary, because I am not open to what we call a dispensary at this time. So I think I've said it, you know, to me, a spa, something like a spa would be ideal, something to do with wellness would be ideal. We see where we are, we see what kind of use we get, and we go from there. So, yeah, I guess technically I am open to some non-classic dispensary use.
Okay, thank you. And I've already expressed an openness to that secondary type of business. Just trying to go through some of these other questions. I don't get the sense that there needs to be much discussion about manufacturing, packaging, even testing. I'm getting the sense that that's a no from the majority of the council, at least. That was included here. Commercial cultivation, I think, is also a no, it's still prohibited at the county level. We've talked about the number of businesses already, either none, one, or maybe a couple, but we still need to talk about areas of interest. I think there, to Councilmember Mueller's point, I think something else we need to consider, this last bullet point on page two, if products are sold in, I mean, I couldn't do it at Ranch Market, because of the alcohol sales there, I don't believe, but that type of business. And that reminds me that we did have a letter submitted by Eric Ausley of Ranch Market in favor of having cannabis retail here in town. That letter is part of the public record, was added to our packet earlier. Getting on to page three of these questions, we've already covered the different types of permit. Offsite delivery services has been addressed, I think there's, you know, if there is a dispensary retail, there's openness to delivery of the product that would be sold there, and the acknowledgement there's already delivery available in town. Then we get into some of the details, I think might even be a little bit premature unless you feel the need to get into, I mean, parking ratios, I don't think we need to get into yet, other types of businesses. But Gary, I do want to hear your thoughts from a taxation standpoint, to get clarity on the difference between medical-only and recreational, and the limitations there are with taxation.
Yeah, so for medicinal, there currently aren't taxes. For recreational...
They're prohibited.
Yeah, because it's a medicine, that's actually right. For recreational, there is a state excise tax, which has to do with the burden of who owes the tax, and that's a different discussion. There's also a state sales tax that would apply to that transaction, so I think that puts the base at about 22 and 1/2 or 23 and 1/2. And then on top of that, local jurisdictions can place additional taxes on that transaction. That can be a sales tax, it can be a specific tax just on cannabis, and that percentage and the tax would have to be approved by the voters. If it's a special tax, that's 2/3 approval of the people who are voting on it. If it's a general tax that goes in the general fund, that's a 50% approval, if that answers the question.
Yeah, so there'd be no revenue stream out of medical-only, and there could be a revenue stream, but also there is a concern that we've all been hearing, I think that there is only a certain threshold that the industry has that has caused some people to go back to the black market, because they don't want to pay the taxes.
And the state is also currently considering, or has about to increase taxes again and modify it, and there's a big debate about that going on currently right now.
And just for comparison, with a wine tasting room, the town only receives the 1% sales tax, so that's the current consideration. The regulatory hybrid framework you're looking at will allow us to have some cost recovery built into the permit structure as well.
Okay. Are there any questions about the taxation piece? Councilmember Durham?
So an excise tax would be to the voters?
So there's currently a state excise tax, and yes...
But if this town wanted to do an excise tax, it would have to go to the voters?
Yes, all taxes do.
Interesting, all right. And then, so the discussion has been had this evening about having a medical storefront as opposed to a retail storefront. Can you tell me if I'm wrong here? There's absolutely no difference in the law, in this law, that the state has put forward at the end of the day, except for that tax?
I don't know if I can say that definitively, that there's absolutely no difference. Medicinal is regularly different.
Sorry, sorry, I forgot I was, I forgot I was talking to a lawyer.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry. Let me, let me rephrase that then.
No problem.
Sorry. So, design elements, security elements, operation elements, cash handling elements...
Yes.
Supply elements, every single thing we could consider. So you're for it, and you're fine with a medical retail shop? What's the difference between that and a retail shop in this law? Really, maybe two things, five things, 10 things?
Yeah, so I see what you're saying, yes. So it's still the state license, they're still regulating it the same way, then tracking it and doing all the same process? If that's your question, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So one of the differences is admission to a medical dispensary requires a medical card...
Correct.
Rather than just...
Correct.
So, so...
Checking your age.
Yeah.
But the models can be exactly the same, I believe.
Yeah.
If there's a spa that uses cannabis products, is your question...
Mm-mm.
Well, then I'm going to ask it...
Yeah.
Which of the same regulations would be in place? Would you still need a medical card to get treatment using cannabis products?
No.
At a spa?
I don't think so if it's a, if it allows adult recreational use. I think the other distinction is age of the person that can go to a classic dispensary, it's 21, but a person of 18 with a medical card can enter a medical dispensary.
And anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's a full medical card, not the one I got to get into Harvest in 15 minutes online.
Well, I don't, I think it's... A sham, I think anyone can get a card.
Yeah, but there is a difference in terms of that age with the medical card, in terms of doing that, and for the taxation.
So, sorry, I'm not clear on the answer I got, and I don't know if, we're hearing some people say spa's okay, dispensary maybe not okay. What regulations would be required under spa use?
For medicinal or recreational?
Both, either one.
Okay. So for medicinal, you're not going to have the same age restriction that you would for recreational, which is the 21, and you're not going to have, well, if it's recreational, you have that restriction for 21, the restriction on sale of alcohol or tobacco onsite, and there's a third one, too. Not visible from any public place consumption in the area. So that's in place. The big distinction, as I understand it, between the two would be the age and who is admitted, and that requires a card. And there are some registration and cards that are issued by government agencies, and there are some that are issued by doctors, and I am frankly not as familiar on the medicinal regulation side as I am on the recreational one.
So, so at the end of the day, you cannot tell going, driving by Harvest, whether it's medical-only or retail, because of the way that the law is set up, and the standards are so similar?
Correct, I think that's right, yes.
But I'm going to keep drilling down on my question. So average person walking down the streets sees a wellness spa that uses cannabis products, they can't just walk in and get treatment. They go through a medical card, they go through some level of...
Yes.
Even security, age restriction? I'm asking, I'm not stating...
In fairness, I think you're going down a very narrow area that I'm, staff is going to want to do a little more research on, but the general premise, and I'm, this is a premise and not coming from facts, you have to have your state permit in order to be a spa. So if the spa is going to have cannabis products, it's going to have to have a state permit, whether it falls under the medical or the adult recreational, and then it would be subject to those rules and conditions. I'm just, that's a...
I'm just trying to clarify, if some people feel like having a wellness spa business is no different than going to Velagio, that's not the case.
It's not the case, Mayor, you're correct. I mean, it's going to be, it would be operating under the cannabis regulatory requirements, but it happens to be a spa.
Okay, I'm just trying to make that clarification. Vice Mayor?
And I do appreciate that, thank you, since I'm the one who raised spa. And I sort of am not being artful in my terms either, I should use wellness rather than medical. I'm not tied to you have to have a medical card to get on the premise. I'm more thinking wellness generally, but maybe it's... I'm more thinking wellness generally, but maybe it's in a recreational business, so I oppose not...
Okay. And Councilmember Durham, I think you had more to say, and I was cutting you off there.
I, it's on a different subject as you move forward.
Go ahead.
I just want to speak to, the public brought up a very valid point about vaping and, and what's going on in the news right now. A couple of things. If we have retail in Yountville, we can set the regulatory permit to state that we're going to set up a relationship with a noted lab and have access to buy anything off the shelf at any moment that we desire and have it tested at a lab with results back in twenty-four hours. So if there was any, ever any question about safety, we can be on top of that immediately. Second to that point is the state has a seed to sell law, so they track from seed to sell. They can track that flower, that cannabis, that product, whatever it ends up, from the moment it was grown, where it was grown at, where it's been tracked, up to that point of where it is sold. So you have a chain of history there, which definitely helps in a case such as with the vaping issue. Lastly, that vaping issue, as of last week, all of that was bought off the black market, so it was not able to track seed to sell. It was not bought at a licensed retailer that was licensed to sell that type of product. So, just for a clarification there. But there is ways for the town to protect the community through that, through that process.
And I think the point's a very valid one, that not only, I've heard the same thing about the crisis that's revolving around vaping and e-cigarette is counterfeit product in particular that's, that's killing people because they're poisoning people. Let's not kid ourselves, when misused, many of our consumables cause problems, whether it's alcohol or many of the prescription medications that we all have in our cabinets at home, when used inappropriately, cause an opioid crisis as well, so...
Mayor, given the hour, I need to have you make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay. A motion to extend the meeting past ten o'clock.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None of you are in favor, but we're going to do it anyway. So, anyway, Councilmember Dornbecker, did you have...
No, that's what I was going to say.
That was your waving, thank you. So, I, I just think that we need to kind of have some context around that. It, it's all valid and it's all important. Anyway, so, that said, Steve?
I think this discussion has provided feedback for staff, and we'll work on crafting a framework and bring it to the Cannabis Standing Committee, get their feedback, and then I, I would anticipate probably the earliest would be the January twenty-one meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Durham, you have more to add?
I have a lot to add, but I just wanted to speak to one other comment that was made in the crowd, from the public, about fair pricing. Once again, we have an opportunity to create a unique situation in this community with the business, and by doing that, we can set the guidelines for our screening process, for our application process, to ensure that that's happening for our community as well. And I think it's important to note that because, once again, we're, we're talking about a, we're talking about a product that's been illegal for so long, so there's definitely a perception of it. But I think it's important to note that we can craft what is unique and what is right for Yountville through all these discussions, and we have the opportunity to move that, do that moving forward.
Thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor, then I want to still mention the maps that we have to present.
Sorry, I want to get to the maps too, but just going to what Councilmember Durham said, could staff please give us a recap of where you see that we are? Because I, I'm really now, as I'm reviewing our discussion up here, I'm getting really hung up on terms, because I don't want to miss a unique opportunity because of something called dispensary or something called a spa, or I, I just...
I don't know that I'm going to be able to answer that question, Vice Mayor.
There might be something that's a perfect fit for us that we've never thought of up here, so how do we figure that in?
The best thing that I can say that we're going to do is that the consensus direction has been to consider, one, retail, and we've heard loud and clear that you would prefer that it be a unique and something appropriate for Yountville. That we'll get into, as Councilmember Durham was indicating, then, you know, basically we're going to require somebody to be a retail plus, and we don't necessarily know what that plus is, and we'll have some ideas in our application process and the screening, but you're going to have to give us more than just the traditional retail. That's what I'm hearing from the feedback from the council.
So, terminology, I think what's happening is we're using retail and dispensary as the same thing, and if that's correct, then that's fine. But saying retail does not just mean dispensary, so let's be clear on that.
Correct.
You just said retail, as long as we're talking about that being a dispensary use, that I think that's what you're hearing. If we call it a cannabis business, that can be anything other than what you're selling, products on a shelf, whether they can be consumed onsite or not is the other issue. But if it's a cannabis service, like a treatment facility using wellness products that have cannabis in them, I don't know that that's what we're calling retail.
Well, can I maybe add to that? Being a pharmaceutical scientist, the way I view this is spa, in my opinion, is topical. It's going, you're going to soak in a bath of something, you're going to get a lotion rubbed on you, it's topical administration. If it's retail, it's either inhalation or oral.
Consumption.
That's how you get it in your body.
You can either buy it off the shelf and/or consume it.
Right.
You could buy, anyway.
But, but if you have a retail, you could also have, it could also sell a topical.
And potentially provide that service.
But a spa could only probably provide, and we haven't discussed this, but it's my perception, a spa would only have a topical.
But spas also very often sell their product, so there is a retail component to it?
Right. But it would be a topical product.
So we're going to need to further...
We're going to, yeah, we'll, we'll have some...
In the interest of time, I do still want to very quickly, we have, the, the Standing Committee has presented again some maps. There, I don't know that we have any visual up there, okay? So if you were here a few weeks ago, you could see them, and I'm sure you could all see them very clearly right here.
And there are additional handouts back here.
Just kidding. There are other handouts over there. What we have basically done is, we have drawn the, I'll call them, you call them buffer zones, I call them conflict areas, that are basically saying, the Standing Committee is recommending nothing happens in those areas, based on church, religious activity, youth-oriented activities like in our parks. And currently, we still have a school, at least till June, and so that's also circled here with that buffer zone. The colorized areas are identifying three land use zoning designations that we have identified as for consideration. The three, commercial zones only. So that would be Old Town Commercial, Primary Commercial, and Residential Scaled Commercial. There are three different colors that represent those three areas. Within those three land use zoning areas, there are further restrictions if there is an overlap of a buffer zone, like it's in residential scale commercial, but it's a block away from a church, and so that would be something that we would say that would be prohibited. There are specific properties within those three commercial zones that the Standing Committee agreed could be viable and also disagreed about their viability. Most of the preferred areas are on the west side of Washington Street, but not all. There is also one location that is a public facility designation, which is the Nap Valley Wine Train Depot on the west side of Highway twenty-nine. That's shown in blue if you have a map. If not, it's where the North Pole is right now. That is a separate zoning designation. That is the only public facility zoned parcel that the Standing Committee was even considering making a recommendation, because that's the same zoning as the school. We're not advocating to put this type of activity on the school property. So that's just a very quick overview. These maps are available, Sandra, on the website, or will be very soon. You can see then which of the businesses, as they exist today, fall in these zones that we haven't really had a chance to discuss, whether all these zones make sense or not. That's going to be next meeting, I think. But like I said, there are some areas that we are in agreement makes sense to consider, and then there are other areas that we need further council input. Vice Mayor, did you have anything else about the maps? Okay. Councilmember Durham?
One point. Moving forward, I'd like to have the, the staff consider and the council consider, that as opposed, these buffer zones, I think, are a good overview, but I think a setback based on path of travel from door to door for this community, given the fact that we're talking about residential scaled commercial and things of that nature, would definitely be a better way to consider the, the buffer zone.
So, that's fine. What I would say is, this is what we did before we had any input from the council...
Yeah, yeah.
And to drill down even more specifically, made no sense until we found out, is this even under consideration? So that's as simple as that. These are the top page, anyway, three-hundred-foot buffer zones across these parcels with no door-to-door consideration, no exemption of, like Daniel brought up, if it's a parking lot versus a building, would we feel differently? So, we need obviously to look in, more in depth on these areas, but that's just very generally where we're talking about. So nothing in the residential neighborhoods, nothing outside of those zones, unless the council were to change the recommendation from the Standing Committee.
So at the, at the moment, all commercial zones are considered?
There is one exception, I think it was the...
Retained commercial.
Retained commercial is not...
Yeah.
Under our recommendation list. There's a very small...
Yeah.
Portion of that.
Understood.
I don't know if we want to go into this tonight, but the mayor and I did have a discussion of east of Washington versus west of Washington, which particularly in the south part of town, the residential scale commercial that backs up to the manufactured home community and/or other residences. So I, that may not be a discussion for tonight, but...
I don't think it is. I think we're all pretty spent on this topic. I do appreciate everyone that's here, whether you're local residents, business owners, industry representatives, all of the above. Again, it can be a very cumbersome, awkward, and frustrating process. We'd like clarity quickly, but because we are required to do this all in, in an open meeting like this, sometimes it bumps right along. So, any last thoughts from the council? We are going to revisit this, I believe, January seventh. We do have a date certain on continuing this conversation, correct, Steve?
Correct.
And, and whatever staff is able to put together for our consideration, then, in addition to some more that we have in...
That'll just be a working draft for you to further evolve and work off of.
Again, no, no action will happen on the seventh, because we have more work to do. But thank you all for being here as long as you were. It's really good feedback to get all points of view. Did you have anything further?
Of course I do.
Yeah, you were leaning in, so...
I, I, I just want to emphasize the fact that quite a few people left upset because of the discussion, and I want to be clear that we've been having this discussion for quite some time. You know, the Prop sixty-four, eighty-two percent of the voters in Yountville who, who registered to vote, voted. I mean, the state would kill for those numbers, so with the federal level, well, at least my side would. So, and so fifty-eight percent of those people voted for this, and we've also, quite a few people referred to the online survey as well, which was, was quite, it's valid by all means. What's valid, I believe, are the hundred and thirty-five comments that were made. And the amount of people that voted to have cannabis legal in California was a far higher number than those who responded to the online survey as well. The online survey is valid, but I still want to point out that we, we've been having this discussion since the day Prop sixty-four passed. So I don't want anybody to walk away saying this has been predetermined, that this, you know, that they're fed up with us and that they have no say in the matter. The Vice Mayor and I both have office hours, and we've both had multiple discussions with multiple people in this community for the last three years. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Staff, you need anything else from us on this item?
No, I think we have enough to work. I will point out, Mayor, we'll need to work, staff's goal will be to work, have something to the Cannabis Standing Committee, and then depending on that, it'll determine whether that comes back on the seventh or the twenty-first, just because of the holiday schedule for agenda, so hopefully we can get everything on a timely basis.
We're going to shoot for the seventh, but we'll see how that goes. Right. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We still have more business to take care of very quickly, but you're not obligated to stay, but if you could just exit quietly, that would be appreciated. We'd like to go home at some point, too. Next up, I think this can be a quick one. Item ten C, Napa County Mosquito Abatement District Appointment. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. The count, the incumbent member, Christopher Ray, reapplied for the, for the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District, and council interviewed him earlier this evening. He was the only applicant, and the term of office for that position would be January first, 2020, and would expire December thirty-first, 2021. And council unanimously recommended him for a reappointment based on the vote tally, so I would ask for a council motion to support that.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank Mr. Ray for his continued interest, and it's very impressive what he's been able to take care of in his few months already on that committee. Very quickly, we have two staff informational reports. Sylvia?
Water process going to be quick now.
Four slides, good.
There we go. Okay. Good, good evening, not good morning. I have a very brief informational update for you regarding the cost of water purchases for fiscal year 2018, 2019. So here you see a familiar graph that we usually view during the budget workshops that tracks the annual change in the cost per acre foot for water purchased from the Veterans Home Rector Reservoir. And there was a considerable increase in the cost for fiscal year 18, 19, and this is based on a few contributing factors. Veterans Home increased staffing at the Rector Reservoir and did some necessary projects and conducted studies, both of which contributed to higher costs of operations. But more significantly, we received less acre feet of water from the Veterans Home while we were, while the system was shut down during a period of time when they were doing some repairs to damage to the system and finishing a large project. So this means that the total cost of... So, this means that the total cost of purchasing the water from the Veterans Home was divided by a smaller than normal amount of water usage, resulting in the higher cost per acre foot. So, it's, it's slightly skewed due to that abnormal small usage. So, since we were unable to get water from the Rector Reservoir, we had to purchase from the city of Napa, and as you can see, the actual cost for that was over $391,000. So, in comparison, our average annual cost for purchasing water from the city of Napa is approximately $2,000 each year, so this is, is quite an anomaly.
We hope.
Yes, hopefully. So, this substantial cost had an effect on the Water Operating Fund, which experienced a reduction of fund balance of over $387,000, which limits its availability to contribute to the Capital Projects Fund for future projects. And the Capital Projects Fund itself is estimated to end fiscal year 1920 with an available fund balance of approximately $250,000, and that's based on the current budget. So, going forward, we hope to minimize water purchases from Napa, city of Napa, and we hope that usage and consumption from the Veterans Home will normalize, which will in turn lower that cost per acre footage. And again, any future capital projects not currently budgeted in this fiscal year will need to find alternative funding. So, I may be a little bit loopy at this point, but if there are any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? No, we do hope it's an anomaly.
Yeah, well, that was my question. I mean, it, from all of our past meetings, it sounds like it's not. How is it moving forward?
That's hard to guarantee. The way our contract is written, that's why I'm saying, we have a fixed cost that they distribute. I certainly think they have every interest in minimizing the...
They being the Veterans Home.
They being the Veterans Home, but we also see that they have a tendency to automatically encourage us to go on to the city of Napa water whenever they have an issue, and so it's just a concern, but as you can see, the order of magnitude is significant. I mean, that drew down our fund balance and, and basically took away a good portion of our, what, what could have been used, for example, to fund the necessary Washington Park improvements. So, the last arrow, or the, you know, check mark there, I shared with you all that we're going to need to look at some alternative financing, which is in debt financing here, staying within our revenue stream to pay for the Washington Park improvements, because we're going to need to do that. And again, if we have another year like we have this year, we're going to be really challenged.
Thank you for sticking through it all tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We like the Cafford thing better.
Yeah, it's, it's...
That was much more positive.
It was fairly positive.
Mm-hmm. It's good news.
And Mayor and council, due to the hour, I will be, we will be bringing back the capital improvement program for you at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any absolutely necessary meeting reports? Very, very briefly, just to make sure that we're compliant with my travel to the National League of Cities Summit in San Antonio, several sessions I participated in, but also principally in my role as the President of the League of California Cities, I participated in several meetings. I also was part of a mayor's learning exchange with about 15 mayors from around the country, and no surprise, housing and homelessness were two of the top topics regardless of where you are in the country. We also did swear in LA City Councilmember Joe Buscaino as the new National League of Cities President, and had a reception featuring the Beach Boys, which was pretty cool. There's still two originals alive. Some of us will be at the league leaders for the League of California Cities that starts tomorrow at the Meritage Resort in Napa for the next two days, and then the third day is a board of directors meeting where we are setting our goals for the League of Cities for 2020, and you want to talk about your retreat?
Yes, the following week, on December the 11th, we will have a North Bay Regional League of California Cities Retreat to make sure that we are in line with the strategic goals that have been planned at this conference this week, and also moving forward to what we're going to be doing for all of 2020.
Says the President of the North Bay Division of the League. Thank you for that report.
Thank you, Mr. President of the League of California Cities Board.
I think we covered the Cannabis Standing Committee report, and I'm guessing we have no other reports, so we have no other business tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our January 7 meeting.
So moved.
I believe that was a motion by Councilmember Dornbecker, Vice Mayor seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday season. Holidays in Yountville. Good night.